Noon, I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Breeden. Counselor Breeden here. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin here. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald here. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn here. Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Louis Jean here. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia Aki. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy here. Counselor Pepean.
Here.
Counselor Pepean here. Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Santana here. Counselor Weber. Counselor Worrell. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for filling in today, and thank you to Trish for also up from the clerk's office for being down with us today. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Father Mike, invited by Counsel Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor. And after the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. We have visitors today in the chamber. So I'm proud to introduce Father Mike. Father Michael is a true pillar of our community, whose roots run deep here in the North End. Born and raised in his neighborhood, Father Michael is a familiar face. I've told him earlier how many times when we're walking around the North End, you can bump into Father Mike talking to neighbors in the different stores, the restaurants. Everyone knows you over in the North End. He also, if you don't already follow St. Leonard's Church and him on social media, he has a wonderful social media presence, always keeps us up to date on the great things that are happening in his community and how he's connecting his church and his mission into the residents across the city of Boston. Father Michael attended Boston Latin School and holds degrees in psychology and philosophy. He earned his Masters of Divinity from the Western Jesuit School of Theology and was ordained a priest in 1999 as a Franciscan friar of the Immaculate Conception Province. His dedication to service has taken him far from home, including 11 years when he did leave us here and from Boston and went to Guatemala, where he directed the Valley of the Angels Orphanage. He also spent time in Canada and Rome, where he earned a doctorate in Franciscan spirituality. I'm grateful. We're grateful for Father Michael's commitment to faith, learning, and community, all rooted in his love to the North End, to the city of Boston, to all the residents here. So I'm just happy to welcome him here and open us in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Father Mike.
Benvenidos. It's an honor to be able to call us and invite us into prayer together. May I begin in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Most Holy Spirit. Amen. Loving and kind God, we come before you this afternoon with humble hearts, seeking your holy presence and guidance, as we gather together to serve and make decisions that impact the lives of others. Lord God, you have taught us that charity is not just an abstract idea, but rather a concrete action rooted in how we personally treat each other, including our enemies. Help us to embody this active love in our decisions today, seeing each person as our brother or sister and your beloved child. We ask for the guidance of the Holy Spirit to fill us with wisdom and discernment, inspire us to make decisions that reflect your love, compassion, and justice, especially towards those outside our circles. May our actions be a true reflection of your love, opening our hearts and minds to serve others selflessly. We ask this in the name of the Father, Son, and the Most Holy Spirit. Amen. God bless you.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Counsel Murphy, and thank you, Father Mike, for blessing us and for that invocation. You are no stranger to this chambers, and so we welcome you back here. We are now going to move on to two presentations. We have one presentation from Counsel Mejia recognizing Anacáona Pageant Candidate and one from Counsel Durkin recognizing Miguel Rosales. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor in five minutes.
Oh, I got my three, my two Dominican amigos. Good afternoon, everyone. It is truly an honor and a great joy to welcome the distinguished participants of the Reynado Anacóna 2025 to the heart of our city's municipal government. Today's gathering is not merely symbolic, it is meaningful and tangible recognition of the dedication, history, and resilient spirit that each of you represents. Reynado Anacóna is more than a showcase of grace and talent, it is a living celebration of our roots and our taíno heritage and our immeasurable value of the Dominican identity in the diaspora. Through each of you, we see the dreams of past generations come to life and the transformative power of the generations leading us into the future. In this chamber, where decisions are made that shape the lives of our communities, we take this moment to honor your leadership, your determination, and your unwavering commitment. You are young women who have become proud ambassadors of our culture, carrying forward a legacy that is rich, complex, and deeply meaningful. Receiving a citation in the Boston City Council today is not just a ceremonial act, it is a public affirmation of your impact. It is our way of saying, we see you, we value you, we believe in you and the power that you represent. Through your participation in the Reynado Anacóna, you have shown not just beauty, but leadership and a strong sense of community service. You have proven that a crown is not only worn by one's head, but carried in our hearts through purpose, awareness, and love for our people. Thank you for inspiring us. Thank you for reminding us that our voices matter, that our roots are a source of strength, and that when we're young and when young women are empowered, an entire community rises with her. Please accept this recognition as a collective expression of pride and as the beginning of a journey filled with opportunity. I also quiero coger un tiempecito también para hablar en español porque esta presentación es para de verdadmente reconocer la cultura dominicana. Estamos aquí en el consejo con dos dominicanos y una dominicana celebrando la participación de las reinas que están aquí hoy y quiero demostrar la oportunidad de que ustedes vengan aquí porque vamos a tirar unas fotos y necesitamos que el grupo venga adelante a todo el mundo y voy a dar una oportunidad a mis dos colegas que digan una cuenta palabra.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Thank you, Counsel Mejia, for putting us here together. I won't repeat many of the things that you said, but you know, I had an opportunity to go to an event, a pageant, just a few weeks ago, to see these young ladies, just doing amazing, amazing work. I had a lot of fun, and there was good food, good music, and great smiles, and it was just a joy to be here. I also just want to, you know, thank all the other partners who make this happen, right? There are beauty salons, I see Gloria here, who have partnered with these young women to sponsor them and to invest in them, and that's what we want to see. We want to see small businesses connected with our youth. I also want to thank Erodi, who's here, who's been leading, and all these women to be the best selves. So it is a joy to be able to see this as a Dominican myself, just love to see the pride that comes with all of this. I'm a proud Dominican. I am proud from Bani, and just really love being able to, again, invest in our youth. And these are just an incredible group of women. So I'm also gonna have Counselor Enrique Pepean say a few words to maybe just read one of the resolutions that we have.
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, to have this amazing group, Reynado Anacóna, here in the Boston City Hall in the City Council Chamber, it's a beautiful thing because they really show the beauty of our culture as a Dominican and just knowing how much of pride we have for not only our beauty, but our culture, what we stand for. And if you realize that each of them have a different town and city across their body, and that is a representation of the beauty that we have across the island and what each of our people represent in our culture, and that's something that we get to learn at the Reynado Anacóna celebrations. So también le quiero dar la gracia a Gloria, a Ibe, a todos los organizadores del comité por hacer este evento posible, porque si no ustedes, la verdad que esto no podría ser hecho todos los años. Pero cada año hace un tremendo trabajo y me da un honor estar presente ahí con ustedes. So now I'm gonna read an official resolution of the City Council. This is just one of them, so I'm just gonna read the body. Es reconocimiento por haber sido seleccionada como candidata al Reynado Anacóna 2025. Recibe nuestras más sinceras felicitaciones. Ser elegida para representar es un honor significativo que habla mucho de quién eres. Ya has demostrado ser una joven líder dentro de la comunidad de Boston, y tu selección como representante resalta el orgullo, la fortaleza, y el compromiso que llevas como digna represente de la cultura dominicana. Este momento es reflejo de tu impacto, tu esfuerzo, y tu enorme potencial. Nos sentimos increíblemente orgullosos de ti. Felicidades por este merecido reconocimiento. Esto es de parte del Consilio entero de la ciudad de Boston, pero especialmente de los concejales Jerry Santana, Julia Mejía, y yo Enrique Pepe. Felicidades.
Who's gonna say something?
El jefe. Dale, jefe, y rápido, que la mano queda en dos minutos.
Hello, everyone. My name is Erodi Matos. I'm the general coordinator of the Reynado Anacóna 2025. Today, I will be talking to you about this beauty event, which is a Dominican beauty contest held in the city of Boston for 40 years. In this event, queens are chosen to represent the Dominican community and all the cultural activity of the Dominican Republic, de la casa de la cultura dominicana de Boston. This pageant is important because it keeps the culture of the Dominican Latinos alive and empowers the young women to develop social leadership and discover their social identity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't go nowhere, guys. We're going to call our colleagues up for the ceremonial opportunity to be part of the photo, so please make your way up. Hi, Ellen. It's good to see you. I have friends.
Thank you.
Si, la reina, adelante, la reina.
Para que se vean, para que se vean.
Thank you. Of course. It's all about you girls.
Vamos, vamos, aquí, una foto aquí, vamos.
Aquí.
Ahí estamos, tutoras.
Make sure everybody sees cameras.
Everyone has a window.
All right. That's good. One. Last chair.
Awesome.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Felicidades.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, everyone. Felicidades. And thank you to Counselors Mejia, Santana, and Pepean for bringing them to chambers. Our next presentation is from Counsel Durkin honoring Miguel Rosales. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor in five minutes.
Fitzgerald bumped the stickers in the Boston market garage.
Good morning, or I guess good afternoon, everyone. Today, I'm so proud to stand before you to recognize someone who has not only shaped the way we move through Boston, but also the way we feel in it. We gather to honor Miguel Rosales, whose vision and dedication have left a lasting legacy on the heart of our city. Every day, thousands of people walk, bike, or drive across bridges that connect Boston's neighborhoods, many of them brought to life through Miguel's brilliance and hard work. His designs don't just get us from point A to point B, they create moments, they invite us to pause, to take in the skyline, to feel part of something bigger. Nearly 40 years ago, Miguel came to Massachusetts from Guatemala to study urban and environmental design at MIT. He brought with him a passion for infrastructure and a belief that bridges could be both functional and beautiful. That belief has transformed the physical and emotional landscape of our city. Miguel has led some of the most iconic bridge projects in Boston and beyond, including the Francis Appleton Pedestrian Bridge, also known as the Fatty Appleton Bridge, which I walk across daily, the restored Longfellow Bridge, the newly dedicated Bill Russell Bridge, and of course, the Leonard P. Zachem Bunker Hill Memorial Bridge. The Zachem is more than a marvel of engineering, it's a symbol of who we are, and we have Miguel to thank for that. Miguel's work is grounded in connection, his bridges aren't just about steel and stone, they're about people. They center pedestrians, they uplift neighborhoods, and they inspire our civic pride. They reflect Miguel's deep belief that cities at their best are there at their best when they're accessible, inclusive, and beautiful. While his contributions have received national and international recognition, I want to lift up something just as meaningful. Miguel is also a dedicated leader and civic leader in our neighborhood, and we both live in our beautiful neighborhood of Beacon Hill. As a longtime Beacon Hill resident, he served five years on the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, serving as chair, always bringing care, thoughtfulness, and integrity to the work of preservation and his civic work. His love for Boston runs deep. And we're at a moment where immigrants are under attack, and honestly, to think about the opportunity we have today to make it Miguel Rosales Day in the city of Boston, someone who has designed the most beautiful bridges, whose impact our communities, we're just so lucky. And I'm lucky to know Miguel and his husband, John David Corey, who is here with us today. They're not just constituents, but I admire them and their friends. Their warmth, generosity, and commitment to our community are felt by all who know them. So today, we honor more than just the bridges that Miguel has helped build, we honor the life he's built here in Boston, we celebrate his legacy of design, his courage as a trailblazing gay immigrant architect, and his unwavering belief that infrastructure can and should be beautiful. It's my great joy that on behalf of the city of Boston, we declare July 9th, 2025 as Miguel Rosales Day in the city of Boston. And so, this is an official resolution. Whereas the city of Boston is proud to recognize and celebrate Miguel Rosales for outstanding achievements, his architectural legacy, and his lasting contributions to the built environment and civic life of our city, now therefore be it that the Boston City Council honors today as Miguel Rosales Day for his legacy and dedication to our city, and I'd like to give him a chance to accept this honor.
Thank you, Sharon. Well, it's a great honor to be here at City Council, and I just want to say that when I moved here from Guatemala almost 40 years ago, all of these bridges were in not very good condition. We had a double-deck ugly highway coming into Boston, and the second wasn't there. We had the Longfellow Bridge, which was in disrepair, and needed to have a lot of investment. We also had a non-accessible bridge toward the Esplanade that I was able to change, and the Russell Bridge, you know, it used to be called the Northwest Street Bridge, that was also not in very good condition, and it was thought that maybe we could restore it, but finally it was decided to change it and do a new bridge. Having the opportunity to work on those four bridges in the city like Boston is a great honor, and it has been very rewarding for me to be here because I have seen how people have embraced the bridges, become part of the culture. Every time I go to one of these bridges and I see people using them, it's a very exciting occasion for me to see how the structures have become part of the culture of the city, and they've become quite famous, and I have to tell you that the bridges here in Boston are the envy of many cities across the United States because we have a very good quality design and also bridges that have been done for the people and for the people of Boston. I just want to thank you again for this honor, and I hope to continue to work here in Boston. It's a city that I have always been very close to it. It was kind of love at first sight when I came, and I never left, so I have stayed in Boston, you know, since I was a student, and I think every time that I cross one of these bridges, it brings me joy to my life. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to invite my colleagues for a photo, as well as all of the guests. If you can stand on the dais with us, we'd love to have a picture of all of you here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Miguel.
Excellent.
Do you want to say?
Sure.
Need a couple more? One, two, three.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations again.
It's a pleasure.
It's such a pleasure.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
I'm glad you're here.
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 Sharon, did he make an appearance on Chronicle? Yeah. I'm awesome. Okay. Thank you to Counselors Mejia and Counsel Durkin. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of June 20. Before we do that, we need to update the attendance record to reflect that Counselors Coletta Zapata and Weber and Worrell are now present and with us. Madam Clerk, thank you. And thank you so much to our guests for being with us today. I appreciate it. Okay. Now on to our First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of June 25th, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the June 25th meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our Honored the Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1345?
Docket 1345, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $644,458 in the form of a grant for the U.S. Inflation Reduction Act awarded by the USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund to grow accessible, inclusive, and resilient urban forests.
Thank you. Docket number 1345 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency in Parks. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1346?
Docket number 1346, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $262,890.86 in the form of a grant for the FY26 DMHCIT TTAC grant awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the implementation of four hours crisis intervention team, CIT, training for officers under the umbrella of the BPD Street Outreach Unit.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 1346, will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1347?
Docket number 1347, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $75,000 in the form of a grant for the MVP Planning 2.0 Grant awarded by the Executive Office of Energy and Environment of yours to be administered by the Office of Climate Resilience. The grants will fund the work climate resilient communities have done to date support communities with new methods, tools, and resources for building climate resilience.
Thank you. Docket number 1347 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency in Parks. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1348?
Docket number 1348, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $32,251 in the form of a grant for the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The purpose of the Home ARP Fund is to provide housing, shelter, and services to individual or household who are homeless, at risk homelessness, and other vulnerable population in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Breeden. Counsel Breeden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to suspend and pass this docket, 1348. It's sort of self-explanatory, the purpose is for funds to be provided housing, shelter, and services to individuals or households who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, and other vulnerable populations. This is a federal grant, and as we know, many of our grants are being pulled back at this point, so I'd like to move this forward and have it directed to the Mayor's Office of Housing in a timely way. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Counselor Breeden, see suspension and passage of docket number 1348. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1349?
Docket number 1349, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $30,513.76 in the form of a grant for the ACLS Grant awarded by the Mass Higher Department of Career Services to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will support efforts to work in partnership with Low Color Adults Education Program to identify and to develop career pathway opportunities for adult learners.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 1349, will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 1350 through 1352?
Docket 1350, message and order for the confirmation of appointment of Napoleon Jones Anderson as a Commissioner of the Boston Art Commission for the term expiring June 1st, 2029. Docket 1351, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ian Alvern as a Commissioner of the Boston Art Commission for a term expiring January 1st, 2029. Docket 1352, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Caitlin Cloud Lawyer as a Commissioner of the Boston Art Commission for a term expiring August 1st, 2029.
Thank you. Dockets number 1350 through 1352 will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets number 1353 and 1354?
Docket number 1353, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Norm Streambridge as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1st, 2028. Docket number 1354, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Rob Stillbridge as a member of the San Fátima Architectural Convention District Commission for a term expiring June 20th, 2026.
Thank you. These dockets will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets number 1355 to 1357?
Docket number 1355, message and order for your review, the city of Boston 2024 Annual Surveillance Report Concerned to the Ordinance of Surveillance Overnight and Information Sharing, Boston City Code Section 16-63.3B3, the ordinance. Docket 1356, message and order in accordance with the ordinance of the surveillance overnight and information sharing, Boston City Code Section 16-63, the ordinance. I hereby transmit for your review the consideration of the purpose of the surveillance use program. I hereby transmit for your review the consideration of the purpose of the surveillance use policy for the rodent monitoring camera system submitted in partnership with the Boston Housing Authority, BHA. Docket 1357, message and order in accordance with the ordinances of the surveillance overnight and information sharing, Boston City Ordinance Section 16-63B3. I hereby transmit for your review, the Boston Police Department report, three social media analyst tools, the surveillance use policy questionnaire, and the relevant department policy that governs the use of these tools.
Thank you. Dockets number 1355, oh, the Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana? Okay. Okay. These dockets, dockets number 1355 to 1357, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, I was waiting for you to be done with this, but I would like to go back to 1346 if possible, whenever the time is.
Okay, we finished with that docket, 1346?
Yes, 1346.
Yep.
I would like to, was that placed in my?
It wasn't. It was, and I, and I, I was thinking that it should, that it should be placed in your committee, but it was, it was placed in public health.
Okay.
That's where the docket.
All right, no worries. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Were you seeking suspension, and you were going to seek? Okay. You bit, okay. I, you know, it's, it's, it came from the clerk's offices in that docket, and I didn't move it, so, but it's one that could have gotten to your committee. Okay. The, okay, we are now on docket number?
13.
1358? Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay. Dockets number 1358 to 1361. Madam Clerk, could you please read those? I want to make sure I get all of them.
Docket 1358, notice was received from the city clerk.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, could you please read dockets number 1358 through 1366?
Okay. Docket 1358, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 4, 2025. Docket 1359, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on June 11, 2025. Docket 1361, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on June 25, 2025. Docket 1361, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jonathan Garland as a member of the Boston Civic Design Commissioner for a term expiring October 1st, 2025. And, docket, yeah. Docket 1362, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of David Narriyo as a member of the Boston Civil Design Commissioner for a term expiring October 31st, 2025. Docket number 1363, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Johnny Hernandez as temporary second assistant collector treasurer for a period of 60 days effective June 24, 2025. Docket 1364, the constable bonds of Shanayz Boiled, John Connors, John Colesso, Sheila Dabey, McKenna, Elijah Iris Ferro, Cassandra Golden, Jason Grant, Regina Henderson A., Vanessa L. Rocky, Tony Marshall, Jimine McNail, Mohammed Mohammed, Paul Nali, Altilo Olivia, Parcell Opio, Adios Pina, Shane Reed, Janaya Taylor, having been duly approved by the collective treasurer, will receive and approve under the usual terms and conditions. Docket 1365, communication was received from Counselor Worrell regarding the FY26 budget implementation. And docket 1366, communication was received from Counselor Flynn regarding Tufts University Boston Urban Rat Study.
Okay, thank you. Docket number 1364 is approved under the usual terms and conditions. The other dockets between the 1358 and 1366 will be placed on file. Some of my colleagues would like to speak. These are communications. It will be limited to two minutes in speaking. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to bring this to the council's attention as the fiscal year began on July 1st. What's reflected in this letter is a lot of ideas and advocacy. We discussed during our many working sessions about the implementation of our council amendments. First, there's a recommendation for a clear timeline of RFPs to be issued in the first quarter of FY26 and awarded by the end of the second quarter. Secondly, I encourage all of my colleagues to work with the appropriate department to ensure your amendments are moving forward as you intended. And then I continue to push forward collaboration with key departments around your amendment to make sure that implementation of, of the amendment is made in the way that you intended as well. I'm asking for also an update on our amendments, on all of our amendments that were passed in this fiscal year by the end of the second quarter, which is December 31st. And third, this echoing a lot of what we talked about, and has been highlighted by Counselor Braden, about transparency and best practices on the capital plan and loan orders. And for that, I'm hoping that we have a working session with the administration to find a way forward. Again, I just want to encourage all my colleagues to continue to advocate for the amendments and to work with the appropriate city departments to make sure that the RFPs are getting out the door, and then those RFPs are being then awarded, and then after they're being awarded, that implementation of those, of those funds are done in the way that you intended. So thank you, Madam President, and look forward to seeing these amendments in practice. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor in two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a communication regarding the spread of a disease among Boston rat population. This is an issue I've worked on for probably eight years now. In April, Tufts University released a major study stating that rats in Boston are spreading diseases, a potentially new deadly disease typically associated with tropical climates. The six-year study by Tufts University found that most rats that live in the city carry this specific bacteria, and different neighborhoods carry different strains that can also move between colonies. Scientists and pest control specialists are warning that it can infect humans and animals, causing symptoms that range from mild, flu-like illness, and in rare cases, more serious complications such as multiple organ failure and death. I have a hearing order on the agenda today, and I will discuss this in greater detail. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We are now on to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1274?
Docket number 1274, the Committee on Government Operation, to which was referred on June 25th, 2025. Docket 1274, communication was received from Anita Tavares, Chair of the Board of Election, regarding the citizen petition to establish an independent municipal inspector general. Submitted report recommended that this matter ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to substitute the committee report with an amended version. There was a small error referencing the docket number, and there's also additional clarity provided by myself as chair under the committee chair recommendation.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the motion to allow the motion to substitute, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion for substitution is allowed. Does everyone have the updated committee report in front of them?
They should.
They should? Okay. If you don't, let us know. But if not, sorry. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to introduce an amended committee report for docket 1247, a citizen petition requesting that the city of Boston place a non-binding question on the November 2025 ballot, asking, "In the interest of accountability, transparency, accessibility, and fiscal responsibility, should the city of Boston establish an independent municipal inspector general to provide governmental oversight?" The petition was submitted pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 53, Section 18A, which grants residents the right to petition their government to place a non-binding question on the municipal ballot, so long as at least 10 registered voters signed on. That threshold was met with 21 valid signatures submitted, and this particular matter was formally referred to the committee on June 25th. The committee held a hearing on June 30th, where we heard from colleagues and members of the public. During that discussion, counselors raised thoughtful concerns about duplication of efforts, legal clarity, and how this petition interacts with ongoing oversight reform already underway, specifically our work to expand and modernize the Boston Finance Commission. What I'm about to say is important and provides clarity on the dual role I'm navigating today as both Chair of this committee and as an individual counselor. As Chair, because this is a right that has been granted to the citizens to pursue, I believe in the full realization of the democratic process. This petition met the legal requirements for consideration, and I take seriously our responsibility to honor that right that's been granted to residents. That is why I've brought this matter forward for a vote by the full council, and I promised that I would, and we are here today. However, I also want to be transparent, both with my colleagues and the public, about my personal stance. Throughout this process, I have engaged with one of our colleagues who has worked in partnership with the advocates, and tried my best to review the logic behind both the pros and cons. And I am human, I am logic to a fault, and I have been going back and forth about the necessity of this going to the ballot. And in a decision that I did, I didn't make lightly, I have not been fully convinced throughout this process that placing this question on the ballot is necessary, and I'm going to explain why. Number one, we already have an oversight body in the Boston Finance Commission. Established in 1907, it is tasked with investigating and auditing all city matters. In many ways, it already functions as the city's inspector general. Rather than creating something new, the city council is currently pursuing a serious and substantive effort through a home rule petition to modernize and expand the Finance Commission's authority for the first time since 1948. That legislative process has been underway for, for a year now, and we are deeply engaged in strengthening it. And one of these newfound authorities includes having the five-member body appoint a director with the title of inspector general. Second, this petition as drafted, in my opinion, personal opinion, is duplicative. While it is technically non-binding, placing any question on the ballot, especially one that concerns the very structure of the government in which we serve in, carries weight. We owe voters clarity. We should not ask them to weigh in on something that, number one, already exists in a different form, and two, could inadvertently cause confusion about whether the council is pursuing conflicting approaches to oversight, transparency, and accountability, which is something that we are currently doing through the home rule petition process. If we are asking the public to vote, the issue must reflect a clear gap in our legislative framework or an unmet public need. That threshold has not been met here. Additionally, the stated rationale behind this petition, as shared during the hearing, is to apply pressure on the State House to act on our existing home rule petition. While I understand that strategy, I believe that most of, the most effective way to advance our legislation is through a strong focused policy, on strong focused policymaking, not through gestures that could muddy the waters. That said, I want to acknowledge that this petition was not filed by any member of the council, but by residents exercising their right under the city charter or mass state law. One of our colleagues has worked closely with them, and I deeply respect that advocacy. This is a unique situation, and so I am taking a unique approach. I totally understand that. One that draws a distinction between my personal disagreement and my duty to facilitate the process. To that end, what is produced here in this committee report is a new version of the ballot question that better reflects our current work. The original language asked whether the city should create a new, a brand-new inspector general office. The revised version asked whether residents support the general concept of an independent municipal inspector general, language that aligns with the spirit of the home rule petition and avoids suggesting the creation of a redundant or parallel agency. This revised language emerges from a deliberative and thoughtful committee process. It incorporates feedback from colleagues and the public and reflects our attempt to ground this question in the reality of what is already underway. I believe that this version best reflects the council's work and the democratic process. And so to conclude, my responsibility as Chair is to ensure this petition receives due consideration by this body, and that includes facilitating a full council vote. My personal opinion is that this ballot question is unnecessary, potentially confusing, and not the most effective tool to advance oversight reform. I believe we should remain focused on strengthening the Finance Commission through a home rule petition process and encourage residents to continue engaging in that process. This particular approach that I am taking is not unprecedented. In 2023, then-Chair O'Rourke took a similar stance with the encampment ordinance, where he introduced a committee report while personally voting no. Accordingly, I am introducing this committee report recommending docket 1274 be moved from committee, and that this version of the question ought to pass should the council choose to support it. While I would be voting no, my recommendation as Chair reflects respect for the petition process and a commitment to ensuring the council's work remains coherent, strategic, and in service of a more transparent and modern city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today I rise as someone who has been working closely with community on the inspector general to advance the citizen's petition to place a non-binding question on the November ballot, asking whether or not the city of Boston should establish an independent municipal inspector general. This petition reflects months of organizing and a clear desire from residents to be a part of the conversation on how we strengthen oversight here in city government. Residents went through this process not once but twice under the illusion that they, if they did it, if they redid it, they would actually be able to make it onto the ballot. But despite that, that false hope, here we are. They did everything by the book, and now with all the signatures verified twice and the legal process that has followed, this council has a decision to make. Over the past year, the city council has worked on establishing an inspector general in Boston. Right now, we're advancing a home rule petition that would strengthen the Finance Commission. Once we get it to passage, if it ever leaves this chamber, we need that momentum to get it passed through the State House. The hope is to send it to the State House with a strong mandate. We can name a number of good ideas that have gone to the State House and never came back. In fact, we've sent things there to die, literally. And if we're serious about getting the petition through Beacon Hill, then we should welcome every bit of public support we can get. This ballot question builds momentum. It tells lawmakers that oversight isn't just a council priority, it is a public demand. And yet, instead of rallying behind that, we see hesitation, we see pushback, we see gatekeeping. We knew from the beginning that the administration did not want this question on the ballot, let alone we knew from the beginning that the administration did not even want an office of inspector general, and we have lots of documentation to prove just that. And now, we're watching the slow-motion effort to block it from within. We're watching the status quo reassert itself quietly and strategically, because this is the third, the second time that I get notice the day of where we're supposed to take a vote about moving in different directions. And so I just really think that it's all part of a larger concerted effort to just kill the bill. Let's also take a moment to reflect on some of the concerns we've heard from residents about how decisions are being made in this chamber. Many have expressed frustration with what they perceive is a lack of transparency, backroom conversations, and a lack of open debate, and ultimately symbolic gestures that really feel disconnected. When residents organize for oversight, and then the response from their elected officials is to make it harder, not easier for their voices to be heard, that's not democracy. We often speak about transparency, accountability, and public trust. This is the moment to act on those values, not by deciding the outcome ourselves, but by making space for voters to be heard. We know that the public trust in government doesn't just rest on what we legislate, it rests on how open we are to public input. By advancing this question today, we're not making a final decision on the inspector general, contrary to what we've been being led to believe. This is really about allowing people the right to weigh in on what that should look like. The non-binding question is clear. The process was followed, the intent is straightforward. It is a complement to the home rule petition, if that's really what we want. if that's really what we want. Advancing it today is about raising awareness and engaging the public and building momentum. Boston voters want more, are more than capable of understanding and weighing in on oversight. To suggest otherwise is both dismissive and misleading. To reiterate, today, we're not asking about whether or not you will agree or disagree with the question, but whether you will be in support of democracy and allow this question to come before the voters. Remember, that a no vote today means that we're asking residents to collect thousands of signatures, literally ten percent of registered Boston voters. And so, consider carefully what this message is sending to the general public. I'll also ask each of you to consider what this moment is calling for right now. Complacency, holding the line for our political allies? No, it's calling us to be strong, to be bold, and to be courageous, and when it comes especially to governance. It calls for letting the people take the reins of their city and providing them the platform to do so. We are discussing placing a non-binding question on the ballot, a question that provides us an opportunity to check the temperature of where residents of Boston stand on the idea of increasing accountability in our city government. I urge my colleagues to not lead with fear of accountability and participatory democracy, but instead to embrace it. Let us pass this non-binding ballot question and dedicate ourselves to truly listening to the people of Boston and where they stand on this issue. This question is about showing respect for public input and letting our residents guide the conversation on accountability and oversight and not suppressing people even further. So, I appreciate the time and effort that you have given me to speak in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair, can I just counsel Braden? You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been thinking a lot about this particular question over the last few days. And I really feel that the Finance, the Boston Finance Commission, or commonly known as FinCom, was established in nineteen oh seven as an independent watchdog agency to monitor any and all business of the city of Boston. And the purpose of FinCom is to ensure that taxpayers, residents, business owners, and employees of the city of Boston have an advocate for honest and transparent governmental operations in the city. As you may know, or as you know, I, over the past two budget cycles, have advocated for increased funding for FinCom, so that they're able to hire more staff to deliver on that mission. And we have successfully offered two budget amendments in these past two cycles to increase that budget for FinCom. I worry that the wording of, or the petition creates the impression for our residents that we don't have oversight, that we don't have an entity within the city already that has the oversight role that the inspector general would have. And I'm very hopeful that this homeroap petition, which serves to strengthen the Finance Commission, which functions as that inspector general role, I'm very confident that if we all work together with our Boston delegation, that we will be successful in modernizing the Boston Finance Commission to increase its effectiveness and increase its budget so that it can be the actual, that it will serve well the function of inspector general in the city of Boston. So, after much consideration, I will be voting no to the ballot question, and I will continue to work to ensure that the homeroap petition that we are working on goes forward. And I will be diligent in my efforts to work with those at the State House to ensure that that homeroap petition passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair of the Committee on Government Operations seeks a vote on docket number one-two-seven-four. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number one-two-seven-four?
Roll call vote on docket one-two-seven-four. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Counselor?
Counselor Braden?
No.
Counselor Braden, no. Counselor Coletta Zapata? Counselor Coletta Zapata, no. Counselor Durkin? Counselor Durkin, no. Counselor Fitzgerald? Counselor Fitzgerald, no. Counselor Flynn? Counselor Flynn, no. Counselor Lou Jean?
No.
Counselor Lou Jean, no. Counselor Mejia?
Counselor Mejia, please, a vote.
Counselor Mejia? Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy? Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin? Counselor Peppin, no. Counselor Santana? Counselor Santana, no. Counselor Weber? Counselor Weber, no. Counselor Rurrell? Counselor Rurrell, yes. One, two, three. Only three in the affirmative, so this docket did not pass. One, two, three, four, five, six.
How many in the affirmative?
Three.
Three?
And nine in the...
And just that I have it correctly, so the vote... Who were the yeas?
The yeas were Counselor... The yeas were Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Rurrell.
Okay, thank you. This docket has not passed. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets number one-one-eight-eight through one-two-zero-one, as well as dockets one-two-six-four and one-two-six-five?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Docket one-one-eight-eight, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June first, twenty twenty-five, docket number one-one-eight-eight, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-eight cents in the form of a grant for the WIOA Youth Program Grant awarded by the United States Development of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund a comprehensive youth employment program to serve eligible youth aged fourteen to twenty-four who face barriers of education, training, and employment. Submit a report recommending this order ought to pass. Docket one-one-eight-nine, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-eight-nine, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of four hundred, twenty-three thousand, one hundred, thirty-two dollars in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of Treasury, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund and support job seekers by providing staffing at the Mass Hire Career Center to help them enroll in education and training program funded by the ARPA upskilling. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-zero, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-zero, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of three hundred, fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents in the form of a grant for the carry-in RESEA program for Fields CY twenty-four grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund individual reemployment needs to unemployment insurance claimant, as well as prevent and detect improper benefits payment and application assistance for training and education resources and program. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-two, the Committee on Labor, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-two, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of two hundred thousand dollars in the form of a grant for the Boston Climate Job Alliance Grant awarded by Citizen Bank Foundation. Community relation to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund critical outreach and job coaching for workers in training to ensure placement into jobs and enhance climate resistance resilience as part of the Boston Climate Jobs Alliance. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-three, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-three, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of one hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars in the form of a grant for the Liberty Mutual Climate Resiliency Grant awarded by the Liberty Mutual Foundation, Inc., to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund minis... negative and adaptive approaches to climate changes by supporting innovative solutions, scale improvement strategies, and promoting nature-based initiatives. This fund empower grassroots efforts to tackle environment challenges. Submit a report and recommended the order ought to pass. The Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-four, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents in the form of a grant for the carry-in WIOA Dislocated Workers Administration Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. This grant would fund administrative costs associated with providing programming to help dislocated workers get back to work as quickly as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-five, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-five, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of seventy thousand dollars in the form of a grant from the Friends of Youth Opportunity Boston awarded by State Street Global Advisor, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund young people aged fourteen to twenty-four an opportunity to work and learn along with intensive staff support. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-six, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-six, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of sixty thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-five cents in the form of a grant for the carry-in WIOA Adult Administrative Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund administrative costs associated with Boston Mass Hire Career Centers, which help residents, adult job seekers, assess employment, education, job training, apprenticeship, and support services. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-seven, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-seven, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of fifty thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents in the form of a grant from the Department of Transmissional WPP Grant awarded by the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund employment and training assistance, career counseling, and job searching assistance for individuals who need, who receive cash assistance, food assistance, housing assistance, to help transition from temporary to service sufficiency. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-one-nine-eight, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-eight, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents in the form of a grant for the carry-in Regional Planning Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund regional planning efforts to address the creation of regional pipeline programming for high-demand industries and occupational, in alignment with regional planning priorities. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. The Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which, docket one-one-nine-nine, sorry, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-one-nine-nine, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents in the form of a grant awarded by the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund employment and training assistance, career counseling, and job searching assistance for disabled individuals who are clients of Boston Mass Hire Career Centers. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-two-zero-zero, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-two-zero-zero, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of three thousand, seventy-four dollars and ninety-four cents in the form of a grant for the SCSEP Grant awarded by Mass Hire Development of Career Services to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund employment and training assistance, career counseling, and job searching assistance for older adults and individuals with disability who are clients of Boston Mass Hire Career Centers. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-two-zero-one, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, docket one-two-zero-one, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents in the form of a grant for the Trade Adjustment Assistant Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund reemployment services to workers who have lost their jobs or experienced a reduction in hours and wages due to increased imports on shift and production outside the United States. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket one-two-six-four, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, docket one-two-six-four, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents in the form of a grant for the carry-in Regional Planning Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund regional planning efforts to address the creation of regional pipeline programming for high-demand industries and occupational alignment with regional planning priorities. Submit a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Submitted a report recommended at the order ought to pass. Docket number 1265, the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development, to which was referred to on June 25, 2025, docket 1265, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $12,869.81 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Youth Administration Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund administrative costs associated with providing the Comprehensive Youth Employment Program that serves eligible youth aged 14 to 24 who face barriers to education, training, and employment. Submitted a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Dossie, for all that reading. Please have lots of water. I think Counsel Weber is probably in competition with the committee with the longest committee notes. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber, the Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Clerk for the heroic effort. On July 4, the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development held a hearing on these 15 dockets in the amount of $2.6 million. Thirteen of these grants were referred to the committee on June 11, and two were referred to the committee at our last meeting on June 25. On Tuesday, at the hearing, we were joined by Vice Chair Mahia, Counsel Durkan, and Counselor Flynn. I would also like to thank members of the administration for attending, including Katie Gall, the Director of Grants for Worker Empowerment, Director of Workforce Training and Programs, Chief of Staff Joseph Lay, and Deputy, I'm sorry, Director of Workforce, sorry, Director, Chief of Staff Joseph Lay, Director of Workforce Training and Programs Dorian Tracy, and Deputy Chief of Worker Empowerment Jody Sugarman-Brosnan, as well as Devin Wedge for being on hand to answer any other questions that we had. I'd also like to thank Shane Pack and Ethan Vara from the Central Staff for their assistance with running the hearing. During the hearing, we were told that 10 of these grants would benefit our two career center sites, the Jewish Vocational Services Downtown and ABCD on Malcolm X Boulevard in Roxbury, which opened just last month. Majority of these grants come from the Department of Labor and are passed through the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, and then dispersed to career centers to provide career counseling, workshops, career fairs, and connections for funding and training to job seekers, as well as recruitment assistance for employers. Populations assisted by our career centers include dislocated workers, SNAP and TANF beneficiaries, young adults between the ages of 18 to 24, individuals living with disabilities, and older adults. We also learned in the hearing that five of these grants would support reemployment programming for individuals who've been laid off, provide wraparound services, stipends, and work experience for at-risk youth, job coaching to employ people to work in positions that would help us in addressing our climate resiliency needs. These include funding for Power Corps participants, which include training materials and supplies, as well as a $550 per week stipend. Deputy Chiefs Sugarman-Brosnan and Joseph Lay conveyed concerns over the federal landscape and uncertainty on how it will impact future funding, as well as plans to work with private philanthropy and partners in other states and entities to build coalitions should they experience any loss in federal funding over the next couple of years. We heard about a program that was supposed to provide, I think, over $800,000 in funding to plant trees in diverse neighborhoods. Well, diversity is sort of a, you know, a bad word according to our federal administration, and they stripped the funding after just a few tens of thousands of dollars went into that program. So, you know, with that in mind, I'm glad we could have the hearing. I am now bringing these matters to be approved by us today. As Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development, I recommend acceptance of the committee report and passage of dockets numbers 1188 to 1190, 1192 to 1201, and dockets 1264 and 1265. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. We are going to take each docket one by one. So, the Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage, oh, before we do that, I just want to make sure that no one wanted to speak. I didn't see any lights. Okay, all right. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1188. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1188 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1189. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1189 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1190. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1190 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1191. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1191 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1192. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1192 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1193. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1193 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1194. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1194 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1195. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1195 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1196. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1196 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1197. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1197 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1198. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1199 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1200. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1200 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1201. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1201 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1264. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1264 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1265. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1265 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1258?
Docket number 1258, Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development, Justice Resilience Act, two weeks from the first. On June 25, 2025, docket 1258, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant not to exceed $1,170,000 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Building Resilient and Infrastructure and Communities Brick Program. The grant is awarded by the City of Boston through the Parks and Recreation Department for renovation of the Mocley Park located in the neighborhood of South Boston. Submitted a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Clowder Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Instead of reading from the report of the committee, I'm going to read from a memo that was sent to my colleagues directly from the Parks and Recreation Department, from Steve Bickerton, who is our Deputy Commissioner. The Boston Parks and Recreation Department has applied for a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Brick, but separate from the brick that we know within the Boston Police Department. This is a grant program which aims to shift the federal focus away from reactive disaster spending and towards research-supported proactive investment in community resilience. The program is a reimbursable grant program with a required cost share. The cost share for this program is 70% federal cost and 30% non-federal cost share funding. Mocley Park was selected as a recipient of a $1.17 million grant for Phase 1 of the project. The $1.17 million grant includes $119,000 worth of federal share and a $351,000 city share. This grant will go towards design, engineering, and permitting services for the improvement project at Mocley Park. The city expects to receive additional federal funding for Phase 2 of the project. This project is also being funded by the Parks Department capital budget. The design, engineering, and permitting services included for the budget under this grant consist of the following. Number one, for design and engineering, developing the resilient berm and coastal landscape from 75% to 100% of the design, developing the extension of the resilient berm between Phase A and the existing high ground at Saunders Stadium from 30% to design to 100% design. In terms of permitting, local, state, and federal permitting for the resilient berm and coastal landscape, as well as working in partnership with the Mocley Connectors Project and stakeholders to submit coordinated permitting submissions as needed. The Parks Department capital budget will fund the design and engineering of the rest of the park's landscape, referred to as Phase B, to ensure the resilient berm aligns with park programming, develop phrasing and updated cost estimates, as well as continued community engagement. There is a figure included in the memo that has a breakdown of all of the phases. The FY 2021 BRIC grant requires a city council accept and expend order to be completed by September 30, 2025. MIMA has requested an extension for this work, which is anticipated to begin in July 2025 and be completed within an 18-month period. With that and all the details provided, it is within my discretion as Chair to move forward at this time, and my recommendation to the full council is that this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clowder Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I understand the environment we're in and concerns about federal funding, which I have spoken on many times throughout this year, whether it's cuts to veterans and military families, NIH research, and others from the federal government, I continue to believe in the longstanding precedent of this institution holding a public hearing for matters that are significant in price. Let me just remind my colleagues, I represent Mocley Park. This is squarely in District 2. I played sports there my entire life. My son, Stephen, plays baseball there right now. He actually pitched a no-hitter against Dorchester recently. More importantly than that, Mocley Park is border, the border of Mocley Park is Mariel and McCormick, which we just had a ribbon-cutting ceremony, also the Anne Lynch Homes, also West 9th Street, all residents of public housing. They asked me recently, they asked me, Ed, what is this funding for, and is there an opportunity for us, people of color? Is there an opportunity for us to speak about it and at least learn about it? And I said, yes, there is an opportunity. That's my job, is to advocate for you. It is critical that the public and their duly-elected representatives are aware of exactly how taxpayer money will be spent, especially in their district, especially district councillors. Would you want the same opportunity to have a hearing if something was happening in your I released a joint statement with Counsel Clowder and Counsel Fitzgerald denouncing federal cuts related to protecting our coast from sea level rise. We also share the same Wolf District area. South Boston elected officials and I have communicated to the city on multiple occasions on our feedback on the park and design to balance protecting ourselves from a potential once-in-a-century storm and provide athletic fields and outdoor recreation for residents. We also have, that hasn't been mentioned, we have a lead problem that has shut down an entire section of the park, impacting children and dogs as well. As I mentioned, the park is surrounded by BHA public housing, Mariel and McCormick, Anne Lynch, Addald Colony, West 9th Street, West Broadway Development is only blocks away, and actually, on the other side of it is Haba Point, which is represented by Counsel Fitzgerald. Again, my constituents that I proudly represent ask me to have a hearing so that they can learn about what impact these funds will have on the park. Is there an opportunity for them to have an opinion and to weigh in so the city knows exactly what their position is? To my district city, to my at-large city councillors, I'm asking for your support as well. I'm respectfully requesting a public hearing to provide the opportunity for South Boston neighbors and community organizations to learn about this and the impact it will have. I'm going to vote, when this comes up for vote, I'm going to vote yes on it. That's not the question. The question is, does my constituents have the right to be heard? Do residents of public housing, should they be given the opportunity to listen on video or on council, or commit to the council, rather, and offer their testimony, give their opinion, listen to their concerns? Again, most are people of color, persons with disabilities, and I was with them just the other day at Mariel and McCormick, and they were happy. They were happy about these funds. They were happy that the Mocley Park is their front door. But they want to be part of the process, and that's not all to ask for, is for constituents to be part of a process that's having a major impact, a positive impact, I might add, on their neighborhood. Give my constituents an opportunity to be heard. Don't push this through. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Chair, I'm also asking if you would ask in support of having a public hearing as well as at-large city council.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for voicing your concerns. I wasn't aware that we were going to push for a vote today, but I, just to be clear, and if public is listening, the council hearing schedule is wide open. We could easily schedule a hearing, and if people are concerned, because we do have the next three weeks off from a council meeting, which is when we would bring it back to vote, we can hold an emergency hearing. We did it just recently when we wanted to come together and vote on the hearing order, on the special election for District 7, the ordinance. So, I do urge my colleagues to support the district councillor and the constituents who I also represent, and if they want to ask questions, we can easily hold a hearing by the end of this week and schedule a meeting if we feel it necessary, that we don't want to wait until August to actually vote on it again. So, in support of Counsel Flynn's request, thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Brayden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I fully respect Counsel Flynn's advocacy on the behalf of his community. I don't feel that passing this grant for $1,170,000 is that significant. It's a small portion of the cost of this project, and I do feel that Counsel Flynn is certainly within his purview to ask for a hearing, but maybe it's worth having a bigger conversation rather than having an emergency meeting in the middle of the summer to actually, you know, meet with parks and have a public hearing on progress on increasing coastal resiliency in South Boston and along the coastline. I know in our district, this week, we had a, the federal government, the Trump administration is clawing back every penny that was committed to our city over the last few years. Like, we have just lost Alston District 9, and the, a grant for $335 million has been clawed back.
Mm-hmm.
And that was earmarked for rebuilding the Cambridge Street Bridge, which is going to fall down on that Mass Pike one of these days. So, you know, I think, maybe it's not that bad, but it certainly needs replacing. So, you know, I think, in the moment, we're in a non-precedent situation, that money that's been committed by the federal government, by the previous administration, has been clawed back by this administration. So, our departments at the state level and here in the city are having to go back and review their plans and say, oh, sorry, we can't do that anymore. If there's $1,170,000 on the table right now, now is the moment to just accept and pass that and have the hearing about what are our plans for coastal resiliency in South Boston and East Boston. But I think it's not either/or, I think it's both those things. We can do both those things, and I think it's our responsibility to, you know, if those funds are there, we need to accept and expend them and move funds are there, we need to accept and expend them and move forward while constantly advocating for the needs of our communities. It's not an either-or situation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Colletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I fully respect my council colleague from District Two and his stance as a district city councillor. Upon receiving communication that you wanted more information, we reached out to the Parks Department. We were able to get this memo. When I received an email from you yesterday asking for a hearing, I sent an email clarifying your request. This docket authorizes the city to accept and expand a grant awarded by the federal government. And so my question to you was, are you proposing a hearing to determine whether we accept these funds? Because as I understand it, these funds are designed to support a community engagement process, which would allow for the residents to have their voices to be heard in district closer to where they live. And so I think without accepting these funds, we are losing the opportunity to even conduct that process and then potentially, as it's been already alluded to, potentially losing money in advancing the project altogether. I would love clarity for desired outcomes of a hearing, and if there is specific information you're hoping to solicit that hasn't already been provided, I do think that process without purpose ultimately stalls progress. So that's kind of where I'm at on it, and I do want to move forward with a vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. Since you mentioned directly, you may respond. She had a question for you. You have the floor.
I'm asking for a public hearing so my colleagues can attend a public hearing, not an emergency hearing, a public hearing that we can have in seven days. We're not meeting for the next several weeks. We have a very light schedule here in the city council. July is very light. It's been a light, a light opportunity, light assignments here. There's not much going on. I'm asking for a public hearing so my constituents can be heard. Is that, is that a lot to ask for? Is it a lot to ask for my constituents that live in public housing to have their voices heard? Or is it about City Hall making the decision? Or is it about city councillors making the decision? Or is it about the city administration making the decision? Do we know best? Do we know best for my constituents? Do we know what's best for residents living in public housing? I've said it before, I represent the most residents living in public housing of any district councillor. In fact, I, at one time, didn't have Mariellen McCormick, and I went to federal court so I could get Mariellen McCormick in District Two. They're my constituents. They're my neighbors. I respect them. They deserve to have a voice in city government. That's my job. My job is to represent them. I'm also on the ballot, and there's two other opponents that are running against me. If people feel differently in my district, vote against me. I'm fine with that, but I'm going to do everything I possibly can for my constituents so that they can have a voice in city government. This can't be top-down. This isn't about chairs and parks and the mayor's administration. This is about residents having a voice in city government. It's about people of color being able to speak up at a public meeting and offer their opinion. Do they have the right to have an opinion and speak about what's important in their front yard? That's the question we should be asking today. Again, I'm voting for this, but I need to ensure that my constituents have an opportunity to be heard, and I'm feeling right now that they're not being heard, and this city council is blocking that. This city council is blocking an opportunity for my constituents in public housing to be heard. And I see city councillors, sometimes they come over into these, into my district for ribbon-cutting ceremonies. That's not leadership. Leadership is advocating for them when you need them. Will you speak out and advocate for my constituents living in public housing right now? Or are you just going to throw your hands up and say, I don't want to get involved? My constituents deserve to be heard. They deserve to be treated with respect, residents of public housing. I was over at Ruth Barclay this morning, talking to residents in the south end about the elevator situation. The other day, I was at West Dedham Street across from Villa Victoria, also about the elevator system, and also about them not having the necessary water on site in case there was a fire. There's a fire truck out in front of the location. In case there was a fire, the fire truck would be there. My point is, I take this responsibility seriously as the district councillor that represents public housing tenants, and I want to make sure that they have a voice in city government. I feel like they should be heard, and my colleagues here are telling me right now that they don't deserve a voice. That's what you're telling me by your silence, that they don't have a voice in city government. And I'm disappointed in my city council colleagues. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Colletta Zapata. Since you asked a question, if you got a response, you may now respond. Councilor Colletta Zapata, you have the floor.
I just, I will respect Councilor Flynn. I won't push, but I just want to clarify that these funds are designed to support a community engagement process where voices will be heard, and folks' suggestions, thoughts, and comments will be integrated into the design. I think if there was a different federal administration, I would totally say, hey, let's try to get an emergency hearing on board. We have already lost federal funding on building resilient communities. It is hurricane season coming up. There is urgency here. So I am trying my best to move this forward while also trying to respect my council colleague, we just disagree on this point, but I think it should be very clear that residents' voices will be heard if this is funding a community engagement process.
Thank you. And I also would just like to state that, you know, if the, like you stated, this grant is about funding and about getting that funding, if anybody wanted to file a hearing order today, late file for a hearing on this matter that is not about the grant acceptance, and you could have a hearing anytime in the next three weeks about this matter without holding up this very important funding. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to agree with my colleague, Councilor Flynn, here, and only because a lot of my district comes right up to Mokley Field, both behind it and in front, and there are a lot of other things going on, Morrissey Boulevard redesign and other such issues that will impact what, like if Mokley Field were to change, and we're doing those processes now. So, well, I certainly agree with Councilor Colletta Zapata in that I don't want to lose this money and that if it's coming from the feds, we should take it as is. My question, I think you may have just answered it, but my question was going to be, can we still have a hearing based on this docket in the near future while accepting yes, while voting yes to accept it? And if so, I think the hearing would benefit the constituents a lot because there's a lot of moving pieces in and around Mokley that will affect both my constituents as well as Councilor Flynn's and all of those at large. So I guess that was my question maybe to you or to Councilor Flynn through the chair, if that is actually an allowed thing to do.
And I'm happy to answer, and I've seen it many times, that during a council meeting, someone will draft a very quick hearing order. It can get added to the agenda, and in the next, however, whenever it wants to be held, we can have a hearing on that matter. It doesn't need to hold up the grand process.
Great. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. You have the floor.
I was next, but.
No, she had her light on. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you.
You know that's an option.
I'll be quick.
All right, Councilwoman Hia, do you want to go?
No, I'm going. I'm speaking.
Okay, okay.
So, thank you all for This Is Democracy. Want to just rise again to just say that he's not asking Councilor Flynn and through the chair to Councilor Flynn to clarify, you're not asking for an emergency hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You're just asking that we don't suspend a pass and we hold a hearing going forward. And yes, this grant is going to support community engagement, but it's not in the form of a council hearing, which we know is very different. We control council hearings. We can ask, even though the administration often doesn't send people we want or always support it, but then we can control the hearing when it happens, who we invite. This grant is just going to support maybe some sort of engagement, which I've heard time and time again over these last four years, that many of the residents across the city of Boston do not feel like their voices are heard. And even though different departments check boxes off saying that they held community hearings, they had public hearings, they did a Zoom, they sent out a flyer, oftentimes many still feel as though they're not heard. So I am going to support that we hold off on a vote. We support the district councillor. We hold a hearing. If people want to vote in favor of the grant, I have already suggested, and I think his office was already doing it, to do exactly what was said, to file a late file today.
Absolutely.
But I would hope that our colleagues would actually engage and that the administration would then want to listen to the concerns of the residents. And it's also, one last thing, it is a very small amount to the big picture, but for many times, myself included, not just the residents that are affected directly by this grant, any opportunity, if it's a fifty-dollar grant, if it's a fifty-million-dollar grant, any and every time something comes onto our council agenda, that is our ability to then use our power and to hold hearings and work together, and when we continue to just push things through, we're not being as effective as I think we could. And our effectiveness is direct correlation to whether or not the residents of the city of Boston get what they deserve.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Hia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for the, let me break it down for those people who are paying attention to the dynamics in this chamber, is that we say we want to listen to people, we want to give people a voice, we want to hold ourselves accountable, we want to be transparent, but yet every single time we have an opportunity to do so, we fall in line and just do what we are told, and I think that that behavior, we can't say we are for one thing and then act another, right? So if we're going to be consistent, then this is what consistency looks like. We pick and choose what hearings we have, who gets to speak, who's going to be on board, and a lot of this is really the dynamics of this particular body and the administration that we are navigating in. And because I can speak without fear, because I fear no one but God, I can get up and say that we need to change the way we do business up in here because this dynamic, this picking and choosing, I think that as a body, if we're, if somebody gets a committee, place, a hearing placed in their committee, then there should be a standard, a process, a protocol, and a procedure, and some sort of accountability that these things navigate through the process. Otherwise, this body is just here like lame ducks, right? We don't really do much. We pick and choose the battles that we want to fight for. We take these symbolic votes, and I think that, I understand it's election season and everybody's, all, everybody's trying to, you know, secure their seats and whatever the case is, but at the end of the day, we have a job to do. And if our job is to give people a voice and then to bring the voices of the people into this chamber, then we should honor it at all times, not when just as politically advantageous for us to do. Like, we had a citizen's petition that we had to go over it twice. Citizens worked on it twice, and yet their voices were not heard. So I don't understand how we keep saying we're going to give people a voice, and then when we allegedly do, we don't hear them. What voice are we giving them? For real? Y'all, like, this, this, we need to get it together because otherwise, people are going to keep laughing at us because right now, we are not demonstrating positive and bold leadership.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hia. I would just like to state that over the last two months, I have seen a number of people in a number of chairs pass millions of dollars' worth of funding, suspend and pass, especially for federal grants. The Chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be filing a hearing order on this. My staff is helping me write that now, but I do have to offer that I'm extremely disappointed in this body as a whole for not having the courage to hold a hearing to ensure my constituents are heard, and that's very disappointing to me to know that I don't have the support of colleagues. They don't believe my constituents should be heard about a particular matter in my district, and this is all, this is all about politics. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I am very proud of this body for moving forward on very important federal dollars and our ability to hold hearings in chairs who care deeply about environmental resiliency. So thank you to my colleagues for pushing forward on grants, especially when there's a matter of urgency. We've passed grants that matter for our young people recently for three million dollars, and these are important federal dollars that should not be caught up in politics, which is what is happening. The Chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just think the committee chair is doing a great job. I have definitely been on the receiving end of this type of barragement, and I also think that there is a reason why the committees are structured the way that they are because, and it does sound like, based on her recollection, that she did everything she could to let the district councillor know about what she was trying to do today, and I just think the fact that elections are being brought up in, on the floor, it just shows me that we're essentially making this about something it's not. If you want to get up and give a really big speech, I think you should go to Congress. This is the city council, and I think the chair is doing a great job.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. You have the floor.
Oh, is my light still on? Thank you, Madam President, and in no way, for me personally, is this an attack on any individual chair, but I do just want to say, because it was said by you, that we have passed many grants, and I think it's important, but never once has a district councillor stood up and asked me to reconsider and put it to a hearing, and if they had, I think every time, or I'd have to have a really good reason why I wouldn't, I would have said, yes, let's... So the fact that a district councillor is standing up and asking for it is what's making this day, this particular hearing order is different. So I just want the public and anyone else who's listening is to be clear, it's because the district councillor did stand up and ask for our support.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Colletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. So I have asked twice now what the goals are of having a hearing besides having one. There is going to be a community process. You also have the opportunity to produce a hearing to talk about the broader plan for Mokley Park. There is urgency here with the federal government, although I am saying as chair now, reading the room, and I'm getting looks that I will ignore, but I'm reading the room and I'm getting that folks want me to pull back, that we will pull back, and that we will have a hearing, and in this moment of collaboration and camaraderie, things that we want to do moving forward together, I will pull back, we will have a hearing, although I would love to understand what is going to be asked at the hearing, making sure that we can get folks from South Boston there, making sure that we can get folks from Mariellen McCormick there. I haven't heard what sort of productivity it will provide in addition to all of the information that's already been provided in both the memo form and in the committee report. So I pull back my recommendation to suspend and pass, we'll have a hearing on it, and I think we can just go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Colletta Zapata, for your leadership on this issue and for your understanding the urgency of the matter and for your work on this. I think you said it perfectly when you said process without purpose is pointless. I don't know if that's the P that you used, but, and so I look forward to your continued stewardship, your continued leadership on this issue. I am so proud of the work that you do on this council as a Chair of Government Operations. The Chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, but my main point, I don't know if you missed it, Madam Chair, is residents in my district deserve to have a voice when it comes to matters of issues impacting their neighborhood. I felt like my neighbors weren't being heard, and we were going to vote on a particular docket for over a million dollars without having the voices of public housing residents heard during this process. So it's, that's my main concern, my only concern. I was planning to vote for this, but my concern was residents of public housing, giving them the opportunity to be heard in this city council body, to understand what their concerns are, Madam Chair, about Mokley Park. This is in their front yard, and I want to make sure that they are heard, they are respected, and there might be some translation and communication assistance we might have to provide them so that they can be heard as well. Many of them are Spanish-speaking residents, and I want to make sure that they are heard during this process. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Colletta Zapata. You have the floor, and then we are moving on.
Thank you. This is the last thing that I'll say. Residents' voices are going to be heard. This money helps fund the community engagement process for Mokley Park.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 1258, will be referred to the committee. This docket, docket number 1258, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. We are now on to matters recently heard. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets number 1256 and 1257?
Docket 1256, message and order for your approval on order to reduce the FY25 appropriation for the reserve of collective bargaining by $747,842, provide funding for the Boston Public Library Department for the FY25 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and AFNE Local 1526.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Councilor Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on Monday, July 7, 2025, to discuss dockets 1256 through 1257, testifying on behalf of the administration with Budget Director James Williamson, Labor Relations Director Renee Bushy, and BPO Chief of Staff Sarah Zaffaris. On the city council, we had Council President Louis Jean, the vice chair of the committee, Council Peppin, and Council Flynn in attendance. Director Williamson explained that the dockets involve two appropriation orders, a reduction of approximately $748,000 from the FY25 reserve for collective bargaining, and an equivalent increase to the BPO personnel budget. According to Director Bushy, 18 collective bargaining agreements were approved by the council for FY25 totaling $48.3 million. Director Williamson outlined wage changes, including 2% wages, 2% raises each October and flat increases of $500, $250, $250, and $800, and $175 each January. Director Bushy also noted the contract mirrors other recent agreements in its economic terms and also includes an update to hiring, discipline, performance evaluations, and the compensation grade appeal process. Additional provisions include sick time during probation, prepaid legal services, Sunday overtime for non-facilities employees, and a higher starting salary for new hires. Ask me the union involved represents BPO employees, as does the Professional Staff Association, which covers the librarians. The three-plus-one-year contracts run retroactively from October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2027. Representatives explain that changes to the agency fee language are a housekeeping item to align with the Supreme Court janitor's decision. Quarterly manager meetings are expected to begin soon to help fill vacancies more efficiently. Performance evaluations will continue to be conducted by supervisors and a different bargaining unit to avoid conflicts of interest, which outchange any just cause protections. As chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these dockets ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orell, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding a hearing on these. I know that these are important contracts for us to get through. I want to thank our library staff who do such incredible work, so thank you for putting these forward. Would anyone else like to speak on these matters? Okay. Councilor Orell, the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1256. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number... Is there something you wanted?
Yeah, I didn't read. Excellent.
Okay, just for 1256.
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number 1256?
Sure.
Docket number 1256, Councilor Brayden.
Yes.
Councilor Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jean.
Yes.
Council Louis Jean, yes. Council Mahia. Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin. Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Orell.
Yes.
Council Orell, yes. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. 12 in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1256 has passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1257 into the record?
Docket 1257, message and order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Library Department for FY25 in the amount of $747,842 to cover the FY25 cost item contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and AFNE Local 1526. The terms of the contract are October 1, 2023, to September 30, 2026, and October 1, 2026, to September 30, 2027. The major provision of the contract includes base wage increases of 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract terms, and flat amount of $502,5800 and $175 to be added at the annual salary in January of each fiscal year. The agreement also includes the additional of prepaid legal benefits as well as changes to Sunday overtime for certain positions.
Thank you. And Councilor Orell also already spoke to this, so Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number 1257?
Yep. Roll call on docket 1257, Council Brayden.
Yes.
Council Brayden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jean.
Yes.
Council Louis Jean, yes. Council Mahia. Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin.
Yes.
Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. Council Orell.
Yes.
Council Orell, yes. 12 in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1257 has passed. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Would like to remind my colleagues that if you are a lead sponsor, you have three minutes to speak on a matter. If you are a co-sponsor or another council wanting to speak on the matter, you have two minutes. The chair... Madam Clerk, can you please read docket number 1367?
Docket 1367, Council Orell offered the following: A petition for a special law regarding an act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officer for Angela C. DePina.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a home rule petition that seeks an age waiver for Angela C. DePina, a 45-year-old Boston resident who has lived in Dorchester for over 23 years. Angela has always wanted to be a police officer. She's known in her community for her honesty, integrity, and encouragement. Whether she's at the mall, a game, or a neighborhood event, she leads by example. Angela brings strong values and a deep commitment to public service. She wants to serve not just by wearing the badge, but by building trust and connection with those around her. She recently passed the civil service exam and is ready to serve on the Boston Police Department. For those reasons, I respectfully ask the council to suspend and pass this home rule petition today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Councilors Brayden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair.
And Mahia.
Oh, and Mahia. Councilor Orell seeks suspension and adoption of docket number... In passage of docket number 1367. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1367, Council Brayden.
Yes.
Council Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jean.
Yes.
Council Louis Jean, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. Council Orell.
Yes.
Council Orell, yes. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 in the affirmative.
And if Council Peppin would like to vote, he's a yes on the matter.
Council Peppin, so 12 in the affirmative.
Okay, 12 in the affirmative. Docket number 1367 has been... Has passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1368?
Docket 1368, Council Fitzgerald offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding the creation of a regional substance use disorder and mental health fund to address mass and caste crisis.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Madam President, could we add Councilwoman Flynn?
He is so added. Councilwoman Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. For too long, the city has shouldered the burden of the region and, to a greater degree, the state's substance abuse and mental health issues. We have a concentration of services, the majority in a singular city neighborhood, that other cities and towns get to dump their issues on and at no cost to them. The majority of folks at mass and caste are not even Boston residents, as we know. However, we have also seen neighboring municipalities join forces to address regional issues in many other sectors. Municipalities may combine for high schools for two neighboring counties, waste management. We have a relationship with the City of Cambridge and carry their waste. We'll get to the waste management in a second, though, later on in this meeting. But so today, I'm calling for the creation of a regional substance use disorder and mental health fund. I've already been asked, what are the details? Who is involved? What's the dollar amount we're looking for? But for this specific avenue, it's just the beginning of the conversation. I hope to collaborate with all the neighboring cities and towns and all the relevant city and state agencies to coordinate acceptable solutions, stand up the appropriate infrastructure, and figure out what these solutions will cost. You know, as I've thought about this issue, and I think about Boston and its relationship with its neighboring municipalities, I think of that as the mother in a household. Like a mom, Boston is resilient, beautiful, and carries the mental and often financial load for the family around her. And in doing so, she has watched those around her that exist because of her grow up happy and healthy. But at some point, the burden becomes too heavy, and it comes time to put your own dishes away after dinner, fold your own clothes, pay your own cell phone bill. And we do so not with a sigh or because we're forced to, but because we know it's time to step up. It's time to give back. Because I think we all know what happens when mom decides to stop carrying the burden for others. That household goes south fast, and that's not beneficial for anyone involved. Politically, this may be difficult, but morally, we can all agree it's the right thing to do. I urge all other participants to think of that and politely ask them to step up, lead by example, and just like at home, the more hands, the lighter the load, the lesser the cost, and the lesser the impact for all. It's time for a regional solution to a regional crisis. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councilwoman Fitzgerald for filing this and, more importantly, for your important leadership on this crisis that we're facing as a city, as a state, as a country. Just recently, we also... We all heard from a well-respected city official that what is happening now at mass and caste has been a failure. I think we all agree on that. But what's important is we move forward to solve the problem. However, we've allowed and enabled these conditions on the ground to worsen. We have public safety challenges, public health challenges, significant quality of life issues for residents across the city, from Melania Cast to the South End, the Andrews Square in South Boston, Uvian Square, the Boston Common downtown Boston, and other locations as well, Dorchester. We all have someone in our families that have been gripped by addiction. We all know how critical it is for them to receive the help and support, whether it's detox or recovery services. As a former Massachusetts probation officer who focused strictly on reentry services, I know that the recovery service facilities at Long Island were invaluable. But while we have solely focused on the $100 million budget on the Long Island Bridge, we have to remember that there's people that are suffering on these streets, but also to support residents who have been dealing with this for a long period of time. We need the same focus on what's happening at mass and caste and getting to the root causes of what's happening at mass and caste. But most of all, we have to come together as a city, state, and a country, as Council Fitzgerald highlighted, and support and come together and support a program, a plan that works as a probation officer. I would literally get people coming on probation from across New England, and they would get a one-way bus ticket from various locations into Boston and told to stay at the Pine Street Inn, and by the way, check in at Suffolk Superior Court for your probation. That's not solving a problem. That's putting a problem at someone else's doorsteps. So Council Fitzgerald is correct. This is a regional approach, and it's going to take city, state, and federal officials, federal officials and state officials, to come together to acknowledge that we need support and we can't do it alone. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. What we're doing now isn't working. We've been talking a lot over the last decade, but especially over the last few weeks, as things, as they always do when the summer months hit, come to a boil. And despite Boston's heavy investment in shelter, harm reduction, sanitation, and policing, the situation at mass and caste, and as we know, it's not just mass and caste anymore, it has continued to go out further into all of the neighborhoods across the city, it continues to worsen. My neighbors, my constituents, and local service providers say so, and they continue to say that it's the worst they've ever seen. This crisis is regional. Data from Boston Public Health and BMC show that most individuals assessing services are not from Boston alone, yet we, Boston, carry the burden financially and operationally alone. It's time for every city and town in greater Boston to step up. We need coordinated funds backed by equitable contributions from all the municipalities whose residents rely on our services. Think regional housing, treatment, wraparound care, not just stopgap approaches. I've said it before, like in 2021, when I called for urgent state-level accountability, the status quo is not acceptable. This hearing is critical, first step towards shared responsibility in real, sustainable solutions. So thank you, Councilwoman Fitzgerald, for sponsoring this hearing, and I believe we need to move forward from crisis response to crisis resolution. It's not getting any better, and the residents deserve our leadership here.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Brayden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilwoman Fitzgerald, for leading on this issue. The one big regional substance abuse, substance use disorder and health fund to address, I think regional is the key word there. The other big question we have, we just heard recently of the opioid settlement with running to billions of dollars. My big question is, how is that... How are those settlements for the opioid crisis being spent? How the money's been spent? It's a huge amount of money. And I really feel that with really mindful consideration of dealing with this as a regional problem, that we should be able to access some of those billions of dollars to help address this problem. So I look forward to the conversation, and thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Was anyone else looking to... The chair recognizes Councilwoman Peppin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to stand and give thanks to Councilwoman Fitzgerald for coming up with this idea because we know that, yes, it is something that impacts this district and Councilwoman Flynn's district, but it really impacts the entire city, and it impacts the entire state. And there's a lot of families that are struggling every single day because they have a loved one that has fallen just into some sort of addiction. And I think that we need to do our jobs as a city to make sure that we're working in collaboration with our other municipalities, our towns across the state, and, you know, tackle this as a collective effort. And I think that when we do that, we find success. So I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Fitzgerald and looking forward to working with him on this.[1714.41] this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald.
I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Murphy.
Okay, okay. Counsel Fitzgerald seeks to suspend the rules to add Counsel Murphy as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Murphy is so added. I also wanted to thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald, for filing this. It's a regional issue. It's a statewide issue, and it is one that requires public health response, a public safety response to a dire, dire crisis of people who are suffering and of residents who are really suffering quality of life. I want to thank Lily from the Cooper Community Center yesterday. My office was down in Roxbury with Lily, who's the executive director, with Rat Moran, with Officer Boishman, the CSO, really looking at the effects of the opioid crisis, not just in the direct Mass and Cass area, but in Roxbury and in Ramsey Park, and seeing a park where our young kids can no longer, are no longer using the park because of other people who are using the park. And it was a real disappointment. And so I just want to uplift the work of Lily and the Cooper Community Center and all of the folks in the South End and Roxbury who are working to help address some of the issues. I know that they have heard for a long time that the city is working on this issue, and the reason why it's really hard is because it's not just, it's not just a city issue. It's a regional issue, and it's a statewide issue, and the disease of addiction is an incredibly difficult one that is increasingly impacting, affecting the quality of life of our residents down in the South End, Dorchester, Roxbury. And so I just want to say thank you to the work that the Cooper Community Center is doing in Roxbury, and know that, that as we try to approach this issue regionally, hopefully, we can get all hands on deck. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I obviously can't speak, you know, into the particulars of this particular issue. It's not in my district, but I do want to point to a really important part of federal legislation sponsored by Senator Markey, the Modernizing Methadone Act, which would allow folks to be able to access methadone at their local pharmacy. I think this is key to the solution at Mass and Cass, and I definitely think it's something that the city of Boston should be lobbying for. It's sponsored in a bipartisan way, and I think, unfortunately, you know, Kenmore Square used to have a methadone clinic that created a lot of issues. Once the methadone clinic was gone, so were the issues. It's not to demonize any type of care or medication that people need, but we do need to be thinking big, we need to be thinking strategic, and we need to be looking at root causes. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Kalad Zapata, Durkin, Mahia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1368, will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1369?
Docket number 1369, Counsel Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss pest control and discovery of leprosis in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the outset of this pandemic, when rats had their food source cut off from restaurants, we saw a dramatic rise in rodents in our neighborhoods. I filed many hearing orders on pest control with many, many colleagues as well. Several years ago, I met with the New York City Ratsar and advocated for a dedicated point person and department focused on pest control throughout Boston. Last year, in fact, I filed an ordinance to establish an Office of Pest Control. Brings me to this point, a Tufts University study from April on the Boston urban rat population found that rats in Boston are carrying and spreading different diseases now. It's a bacterial disease that impacts both humans and other animals. This disease thrives in warmer temperatures. Unless managed properly, we will continue to see the spread of this disease in our communities, which could impact vulnerable populations such as our homeless community, our street cleaners, sanitary workers, healthcare workers, and those who come in regular contact with animals as well. Currently, pest control is cross-departmental effort in the city of Boston with ISD, Public Works, Boston Water and Sewer being the main points of contact. I've been on many walks with the Pest Control Office recently, want to acknowledge their important work. Following the release of the city's Boston Rodent Action Plan last year, as well as the new Tufts University report, it is important for us to review this report and determine the impact it could have on Boston neighborhoods, but also to listen to testimony from experts in the pest control field, especially as it relates to quality of life issues and public health issues. In the final analysis, Boston is ranked 12th in the United States for pest control issues. Both myself and renowned rodent expert Dr. Kerrigan also recommended in the city's own report from the Rodent Action Plan, we both advocated for a dedicated point person or Ratsar to provide all their attention to this issue. And the Boston Public Health Commission indicates in the report that rats currently do not possess a high public health threat to Bostonians. I disagree. I disagreed then, I disagree now. I heard about a rat in a baby's bedroom recently. I heard about a rat in a crib. That's a public health emergency. I'm not trying to cause alarm, but I want to ensure that we provide the best pest control services we possibly can to every resident of the city of Boston. We also need to work on trash containerization. We need to do significant outreach on how to properly dispose of trash, provide language access for immigrant neighbors as well. District councilors especially know it is getting worse from the phone calls we receive. We receive them every single day. We go on walk-throughs in different neighborhoods. We need to show we're serious about this.
Counsel Flynn? Yeah, just could wrap it up. Your 30 seconds over. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
So this morning, I was in Alston Brighton, speaking with residents who are fed up with the growing rat problem in their neighborhood, and as an at-large city councilor, I hear this from neighborhoods, residents in neighborhoods all across the city, and I know all of us also do. This isn't just a nuisance, it's a public health issue. And as Counsel Flynn was saying, a new Tufts University study confirmed that Boston rats are carrying leptospirosis, a disease that spreads through urine and thrives in warmer weather. That's a serious risk for people living on the street, our sanitation workers, and families across our city. We need to know if Boston Rodent Action Plan is working. We should revisit the idea of a dedicated Ratsar, someone focused solely on coordinating this effort. The city also needs to improve inspections, outreach, and language access so all residents can protect themselves and take action. This hearing will bring together key departments to assess where we are and what more we are going to advocate for. So thank you, Counsel Flynn, for bringing this filing forward. And if history repeats itself, it will be a well-attended meeting because all of our hearings, because it does affect every district across the city, and we often get very good attendance at these hearing orders because we know that with traffic and there's, you know, certain issues that every office gets a lot of calls, rightfully so. So I do think we need to step it up and really look at a Ratsar and what more we can do. So looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you. I remember my first year, on my birthday, I attended a conversation about pest control. So it is really well-attended. It's really important that we have these conversations. I want to thank the city. I also want to thank this body because we were able to get in the budget more money for pest management and control. So want to thank this body, and want to thank John Ulrich for the work that he does for the city to really address the issue of pest control. Also, yesterday, when we were at the Cooper Community Center in Roxbury, addressing the issues, one of the issues is that they had, they had put rat burrows on the side of Ramsey Park, but they didn't cover the rat burrows on the side of the Cooper Community Center. So rat burrows were just going from one side to the other. They couldn't go in through Ramsey Park, but they could go in through the Cooper Community Center where the kids are. And so it's really important that we address this issue and want to uplift the work that Emily in my office and that we've done, both in Roxbury and Jamaica Plain, on issues of pest control. But yeah, I think this is an important conversation. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I welcome Counsel Flynn's call for a hearing on this issue. Where I come from, the leptospirosis is known as Wille's disease, and it's very, I've only heard of a few cases in my lifetime back home, but I think I had a friend who was into water sports. He was a competitive kayaker, and he contracted Wille's disease, leptospirosis, in his exposure to infected waters while he was pursuing his sports. So in this case, in this context of having this hearing, I hope we would hear from some epidemiology folks and Boston Public Health Commission to get their assessment of, you know, current levels of leptospirosis in the city, and also hear from the Tufts, the Tufts researchers as well, just as we monitor our water for COVID. I'm just, I'm curious to see if we're monitoring it for such, for the incidence of leptospirosis as well. So thank you. I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselors Braden, Kalad Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair? So this docket, docket number 1369, will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1370?
Docket number 1370, Counsel Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss the goals and priorities of the Office of Arts and Culture and the Office of Tourism, Sports, and Entertainment in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Chair of the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Committee, I am calling for a hearing to discuss the goals and priorities of this department. Boston is a city that is rich with art, history, culture, with world-class museums, orchestras, production companies. We are also a major sports hub and home to famous professional sports teams. Our city draws tourists from all over the world, who in turn become an important driver of our local, state economy. I know Counsel Worrell has done a lot of work in this field in working with various leagues to bring All-Star Games to Boston, so I want to acknowledge Counselor Worrell's important work, especially on events, national events that could possibly come to Boston and that did come to Boston. As we see cuts to federal funding across different industries, it is important that we ensure that the Office of Arts and Culture and the Office of Tourism, Sports, Entertainment have the resources they need to continue to perform their work in supporting Boston's vibrant arts and culture, tourism industry. I look forward to hearing from the respective offices and having a discussion with Boston residents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Kalad Zapata, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Durkin, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1370, will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Madam Clerk, can you please read docket number 1371?
Docket number 1371, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offered the following order for an expedited hearing on the city's 4th of July payroll delay and its impacts on affected employees.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Fitzgerald.
Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Murphy would like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Fitzgerald as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Fitzgerald is so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
I'd also like to acknowledge that Counsel Pepe did reach out on Monday. He also had written a hearing order, and we did talk, so I was apologized, but I know he'll be a strong fourth, and as we know, that all of us sign on and can support all of our hearing orders. So looking forward to hearing for your, from your advocacy also. So after hearing from impacted city workers, I was one of them who did not get my pay until Monday, July 7th, I filed an expedited hearing order, co-sponsored with Counsel Flynn and Counsel Fitzgerald, to demand answers and accountability for the July 4th payroll delay. Our city employees deserve transparency, not excuses, and I expect a swift hearing date so we can get to the bottom of what happened and ensure this never happens again. And what I said last week is still true today, that today should have been a payday for thousands of city of Boston employees. Instead, many woke up to empty bank accounts and the news that their direct deposit won't land until Monday. Days after rent is due, bills are processed, and families had planned for the holiday weekend. I understand the logistics. This kind of calendar conflict, when July 4th, which we know is a federal holiday, lands on not just a Friday, but a payday Friday, only happens once every 11 years, but it's something that we do know is coming, but that's not an excuse. It should have been flagged months ago and solved before people were left without access to their pay. The reality is that many of our city workers live paycheck to paycheck. It's something we advocate and talk about almost every week on this council. Their bills are on auto pay, and many people I heard directly from, and it's, it's not that they live paycheck to paycheck, but they may split their paycheck, and a small portion goes into one account, and that account had auto pay on, and some were receiving three, four, you know, over $100 in insufficient fund fees when it was a small amount, but there was no way they could transfer money, because as we know, 4th of July, when it's on a weekend, the banks are shut. So many spent the day on Thursday before the holiday scrambling to figure out how to get through the weekend without the money they earned. I did speak directly that day with the treasurer and know she and her team were doing everything they could to help workers that day. But this mistake was not theirs alone to carry. It's the result of a failure across city leadership to plan ahead and protect our workforce from this completely foreseeable problem. So now, the question is, where, what are we doing to make this right? How is the city going to support impacted workers? And will we cover late fees? What are we going to do to make our city workforce whole? Will we ensure this never happens again? I'm calling on the mayor and her administration to take swift, transparent action to fix this, not just to explain it away or to blame banks. Our city workers keep Boston running. They shouldn't be left holding the bag for a payroll failure that they had no way to prevent. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many dedicated city workers, including firefighters and janitors and others working on the July 4th long weekend, did not receive their pay, as Counsel Murphy mentioned. This error reflects poorly on our payroll, finance, and human resources department in the city of Boston. It's also a reflection on us here as well. It was an embarrassment. It should never happen again. I'm also calling for the city of Boston to cover late fees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam President. Always here to advocate for our lowest-paid workers who live paycheck to paycheck, but honestly, it's for all workers, as even those who make a decent middle-of-the-road paycheck still face constant financial pressure and living in one of the most expensive cities in the country. Mistakes happen, but this was avoidable, and I think all of us in city government need to put a little bit more effort in and stay on top of our assignment. There's enough for folks to worry about today. Getting paid on time shouldn't be one of them. And a special thank you to the banking institutions that didn't release the funds to folks, even though they didn't have to.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to thank my colleagues for lifting this issue up. I also got some folks reaching out to our office in regards to the situation as well. So I just want to thank those who were advocating on behalf of city workers. I just think it's really interesting. I'm having a moment of reflection, because when I first came into this chamber, then it was Mayor Walsh and Council President, then Janie, and I remember Marty could not even blink without all of us barking at him for all the things that he could have done differently. And I just think that this is a very interesting moment in our political climate, and normally, the job of the city council was to hold Mayor Walsh accountable for everything, and we did a good job at doing just that. And this situation right now that we're bringing into the chamber is, has reminded me of that energy that we once upon a time had here in terms of accountability. So I want to thank you all for uplifting this and recognizing that, you know, at the end of the day, our city workers look to us to advocate for them, and many of them are afraid to even speak up because they're afraid of retaliation. They're afraid of pushing on a system that if they do, they might be kindly and gently let go of, right? So there is a lot here that is happening inside City Hall, and when we speak up on behalf of our city workers, it's because many of them are feeling afraid of speaking up for themselves because they have a job and a family to protect. So I want to acknowledge the environment that many people are working under, and I also want to acknowledge how difficult it is for people to advocate for themselves when they're afraid to.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the makers of this, of this hearing order. As Counsel Murphy mentioned, I would also plan to introduce a hearing order, but finding out that a similar language was submitted, sorry to just support this one, because our city workers deserve pay. They deserve timely pay. July 3rd, the city of Boston employees were told that their paychecks might be delayed due to the July 4th holiday. That's honestly just unacceptable. I was one of those employees that got paid on this Monday, and if I found myself struggling to pay some bills, I can only imagine how some others feel as well. I got a call from a resident where the husband is a firefighter, the wife is a teacher, and the son is a city summer employee, and they're all part of the same bank. And that bank was not one of the banks that got paid on Friday or Thursday or Wednesday. So luckily, I know that some movements were made to get the firefighters paid, and as Counselor Fitzgerald mentioned, there were some things done that he was able to get paid, but that wasn't the case for everyone else. So I just want to make sure that we are taking this opportunity to learn from it, to make sure that this doesn't happen again, because our city workers work very hard in a very expensive city, so we just got to make sure that they get paid on time. Thank you.
Thank you, and just want to echo that it's really important that people are paid on time. So many people live paycheck to paycheck and have direct deposits taken out, and so this was an L, and it's important for us to acknowledge that and make sure that our city workers who do so much for the city in a very expensive city don't have to experience this again. So I want to, you know, to the workers who experienced delayed payment, I completely understand how it can wreak havoc on your everyday lives and on your schedule, and so want to shout out to the banks that were able to, you know, fix this quickly, and I know that the administration also did their part when they realized that this would happen, but it's important that we are proactive and not reactive.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Mejia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrall, please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 1371, will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Madam Clerk, can you please read docket number 1372?
Docket number 1372, Counselor Murphy and Fitzgerald offer the following order for hearing regarding the modernization of the Boston EMS dispatch phone system.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. I would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Flynn, please.
Counselor Murphy seeks to suspend the rules and add Counselor Flynn as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Flynn is so added, Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Last week, I visited our dispatch center, which takes in our 911 and EMS calls. The operations center and witnessed firsthand, along with my interns, the incredible work of EMT telecommunications, certified EMTs who provide life-saving instruction over the phone every day. Many not be aware, but the 911 call takers who work under SEIU 888, and thank you to their union, who advocated and worked really hard to get them better pay and a better work environment, so they do not fall under the same pay or phone systems that the EMTs take right next door on the wall between them. Their technology hasn't kept pace. Unlike police and fire dispatch, EMS is still operating on outdated systems, sowing responses and risking patient care. Moreover, despite performing clinical duties, EMS call takers are paid significantly less than other first responders, something that will not be directly part of this hearing order, but something that I do want to continue to advocate to fix. Our EMT telecommunications deserve the same respect, and as many in this room know, but if you don't know out there, that the call takers who take in the calls, the health calls, are not just call, they are actual EMTs. So some shifts, they might be out in the ambulances, and some take shifts that are inside headquarters taking the calls. They deserve the same respect, pay and tools as their peers in public safety. That's why I'm filing this hearing order on modernizing the EMS dispatch phone system, examining its reliability, staffing and compensation to ensure it matches the critical role these professionals play. I was told and saw firsthand that some calls come in and they need to be calling directly into hospitals, checking which emergency rooms and which hospitals have beds that are needed, and the system is so outdated that they often have to hang up and call back or use a different phone to find out. So there are definitely systems out there that work much better, and I believe that not just the call takers, but the residents across the City of Boston deserve this. So looking forward to having this hearing and getting this done for our call takers that take in our important health issues across the city.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just several weeks ago, we sat up here and honored our EMS employees for the exemplary work they do on a daily basis and the routine pressure that they face. However, there are existing healthcare deserts in our city, the closure of the Carney causing a big one, and EMS response times have risen due to longer rides. The last thing we need now is an emergency response desert as well, due to poor and outdated communication to exacerbate this problem. This update is needed for the benefit of our citizens and also protects our EMS workers. There are times when our workers themselves need to call for backup. We have to make sure we have the right tools in place for EMS to do their job and continue saving lives. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Murphy for adding me for the work she has done. Also want to acknowledge former Counselors Michael Flaherty and Andrea Campbell for the work they did on this particular issue as well. I think that our EMS staff are really unsung heroes in the City of Boston. We need to support them and ensure that they have all the tools and resources to do their job effectively. They're saving lives. We need to be there for them, to support them. We have to acknowledge, and I think stats have proven this, is that the response time as well has gone up, and that's a major concern I have, knowing that every second being in an ambulance could be life or death. So we have a lot of work to do going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Murphy and Counselor Fitzgerald for offering this hearing order. I look forward to this conversation again. I really, you know, EMS is under Boston Public Health Commission, and the Boston Public Health Commission is technically not a city agency. It is a quasi-public agency, and I'd really like to get my head around, just get some more clarity about the ability of BPHC to have capital appropriations for such things as a modernized dispatch phone system, but also for new EMS facilities for ambulances in our districts. I know in recent years, we've been shaking the trees and trying to find locations and funding for EMS stations as part of a community benefits process, especially with the former St. Elizabeth Hospital, and we're going to have two basements there as part of a community benefit, when they built a new garage for their patients. So there's a lot of misunderstanding about how capital appropriations can be, you know, how money, capital, money can be appropriated by Boston Public Health Commission to invest in these sort of capital investments that make their Boston EMS as efficient as possible. So I look forward to the hearing and have lots of questions to ask, so thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Mejia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrall, please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness and Recovery. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1373?
Docket number 1373, Counselor Durkin offered the following order for hearing to expose the inclusion of pollinator corridors as part of a sustainable development.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to suspend, well, I'd like to add Counselor Peppin, and then I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Counselor Peppin is so added. Counselor Durkin seeks to suspend the rules and add Counselor Coletta Zapata as a third original co-sponsor, hearing and seeing no objections. Counselor Coletta Zapata is so added. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. As the Chair of Planning, Development and Transportation, and as a steadfast advocate for public green space, I'm proud to introduce this hearing order to explore how the city can integrate pollinator corridors into our sustainable development practices. Pollinator corridors are green pathways planted with native species that provide critical food and habitat for bees, birds, butterflies and other pollinators. These specific, these species are essential to our global ecosystem and food supply chain. Yet, due to climate change and habitat loss, their populations are declining at an alarming rate. Today, over 40% of bee and butterfly species are at risk of extinction. The good news is that even a small fragmented green space can help. Research shows that creating pollinator-friendly habitats can significantly support biodiversity and build resilient urban ecosystems. In Boston, we're already seeing the positive impact of pollinator corridors. Community members and local institutions have created vibrant green spaces, including Fitzgerald Park and the Northeastern University Arboretum in my district, the Rose Kennedy Greenway, park with wildflower meadows, beehives and seasonal gardens, actually right in between Counselor Coletta's district and mine, demonstrates the potential of these species to enrich our communities. We have the opportunity to build on this progress. Cities across the state and across the country are looking for ways to build climate resilience, biodiversity and public health. And I think development is a great way to ensure, through the Article 80 process, that we are delivering on pollinator corridors. So there are multiple projects that I am pushing for there to be investments in pollinator corridors, so I want to make sure we have a hearing to discuss this really important matter. I forgot to bring, I just bought some seeds that are local, and I've just missed the planting season, so I think I'll have to wait for next year, but thank you, Counselor Peppin and Counselor Coletta Zapata for joining me in this. Looking forward to a great discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Durkin, for adding me as your second co-sponsor on this. This is a topic that is of big interest for my district. We have Keep High Park Beautiful, and now we have Keep Roswell Beautiful as well. We have the Mattapan Food and Fitness Coalition. We also have the biggest urban wild in the entire city, which is Crane Ledge. We also have, between my district and District 6, we have the Arnold Arboretum. It's a, it's a great, those are great examples of locations and organizations that are doing work to ensure that we are just keeping our natural habitats in place, making sure that we are providing that type of infrastructure in our city, which is why I want to work with you to make sure that we are continuing to expand that. So thank you so much for adding me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank the sponsor for putting this forward. Thank you to Counselor Peppin. Pollinator corridors and green infrastructure, green corridors is a passion project of mine after being able to visit Medellin, Colombia, and I know that Bogota also has green corridors that are connected stretches of natural habitats that allow for animals to walk through, and it helps to create a healthy city, a vibrant city, and also helps to reduce carbon emissions. And so I welcome this. I know that pollinator corridors in Boston are always top of mind for our planners, and when we're in the process of the Article 80, when we're reviewing projects through Article 80, we talk a lot about the public realm and the improvements that we could provide for our neighborhood, and this is certainly one of them in partnership with the green infrastructure team within the Environment Department, and I do want to shout them out because they have been doing a lot of great work. We had talked about pollinator rooftops as part of the Article 80 projects, project review, and I think that just generally trying to embed that into street and sidewalk work, making sure that we are informing folks that are working on it that this is a possibility. And it is just something that the community would love. It's something that they could see their city government doing to try to beautify the neighborhood, and so I'm fully on board. Would love to understand the process in which we can get this up and running quickly, and especially through the Article 80 process. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. It's one to thank the sponsors and Counselor Durkin for bringing this forward. I just want to just take this time to just shout out a few groups in my district and neighboring communities that are working on pollinator gardens, from the St. Mark's Civic to Carmen Square Climate Justice Alliance, to the kids at the Mason School. Pollinator gardens, pollinator corridors will be a key in our green infrastructure moving forward, so looking forward to this conversation, and thank you again for bringing this forward.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my colleagues for bringing this to the city council. I'd love to just kind of advocate as we continue to fight for things that are really going to help support our community. I'd love to make sure that when we do have the hearing, which I'm sure we will have it soon, is that we, it would be helpful for those folks who are not into this sort of stuff to understand how this is going to impact maybe quality of life issues, also looking at maybe food insecurity. I'm sure that this is going to have a greater impact on lots of ways that will help support so many of our constituents, so would love to just advocate for those folks who are not following the pollination, immigration, migration situation. It would be great for educational purposes to make sure that we are helping our constituents understand how this is going to improve and support their quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Counselor Durkin for filing this. I really love this topic. My office last year worked on the ordinance to legalize beekeeping in the City of Boston, and bees are important pollinators, and there's incredible beekeeping work happening in High Park, in Mattapan, at the Audubon Nature Center, and just individual beekeepers. I was actually with a beekeeper this past weekend, and yesterday, my team had a, we had a meeting with the MBTA that's actually trying to increase pollination throughout, pollinator gardens actually throughout the city. So I look forward to this hearing because I think there is a lot of great energy around the city on this topic, and there's great work being done at the state level around pollinator gardens, and it also ties in well with our desire to have more urban gardens and more urban spaces for food justice. So I look forward to this conversation as we think about how we protect our ecosystem and strengthen our environment, and also how we can embed it into our planning and development process, which I think is an important angle here for new development. So thank you, and I look forward to the conversation. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrall, please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 1, oh, and Mejia. This docket, docket number 1373, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1374?
Docket number 1374, Counselor Durkin offered the following resolution recognizing achievements of Miguel Rosales and naming July 9, 2025 as Miguel Rosales Day in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you. I already had the opportunity to speak to Miguel's impact. I'm proud to have him as a constituent, and I urge my colleagues to vote today, July 9, 2025, as his day in the City of Boston.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrall, please add the Chair. Counselor Durkin seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1374. Madam Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1374. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counselor Durkin?
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Liu Zhen?
Yes.
Counselor Liu Zhen, yes. Counselor Mejia?
C.
Counselor Mejia, C. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana?
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. Counselor Worrall?
Yes.
Counselor Worrall, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1375?
Docket number 1375, Counselor Braden and Santana offer the following resolution in support of Senate 2368 and House 3662 on act to increase opportunity by ending debt-based driving restrictions.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. May I suspend the rules and add Counselor Weber as an original co-sponsor?
Counselor Braden seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Weber as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Weber is so added. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
This is a resolution for the council to express its support for state legislation to end debt-based driving restrictions. The Road to Opportunity Act filed as a Senate Bill Number 2368 and House Bill Number 3662 by Representative Brandy Flucker-Reed of Mattapan and Senator Julian Sir of Cape and the Islands. This legislation will eliminate triggers unrelated to road safety for suspending drivers' licenses, allowing for fee waivers or reductions if drivers are unable to afford them. It would require the Registry of Motor Vehicles to send electronic reminders to improve fee and fine, fine and fee collection. There was a successful hearing yesterday in the Joint Committee on Transportation, and I want to acknowledge the important work of the Steering Committee of the Road to Opportunity Act. I want to acknowledge the important work of the Steering Committee of the Road to Opportunity Act Coalition. Today, in the, in the chamber this afternoon, I'd like to recognize one of those advocates, Kristin Bore Zale, a staff attorney at the Greater Boston Legal, from Greater Boston Legal Services. The Opportunity, Road to Opportunity Act Coalition includes the ACLU of Massachusetts, the Committee for Public Counsel Services, the Fines and Fees Justice Center, Greater Boston Legal Services, the Jewish Alliance for Law and Social Action, Livable Streets Alliance, and the National Consumer Law Center. Blocking license renewals for unpaid tolls and other debts unrelated to road safety is a harmful and onerous burden. Without payment plans, hardship waivers, or real options for relief, people are forced off the road simply because they cannot pay in full. This is a common sense reform that accommodates financial hardship and ensures debt alone doesn't determine one's ability to drive, work, or care for their family. After my colleagues speak, I will move forward for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank the lead here, Council Braden, for leading on this. A very important issue. I rise today in support of, strong support of the Road to Opportunity Act, which would finally end the harmful practice of suspending drivers' licenses for over, for over unpaid fines and fees that have nothing to do with road safety. As someone who represents working class Austrians, people juggling multiple jobs, raising families, and trying to just stay afloat, I've seen firsthand how these debt-based suspensions can push families further into crisis. Let's be clear, no one should lose their ability to drive, work, or care for their children simply because they can't afford a parking ticket or a late toll. This is about fairness, it's about dignity, and breaking the cycle of poverty. I'm proud to co-sponsor this resolution and urge this legislature to pass the Road Act, Opportunity Act. I also just want to give another shout out to Kristin from GBLC for being here. I also know that Carolyn Cohen from the National Consumer Law Center is watching online. So just really want to thank all the advocates and everyone who continues to work for our working families and residents here across the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the filers for adding me as a third co-sponsor. You know, this bill would reform a punitive system, would help those who are penalized by it for things that are unrelated to traffic safety. Apparently, over half state, half of states have made similar reforms. And passage of this would, would address the harm that debt-based license suspension has on folks throughout our community. So I just thank you to the filers and the advocates who've highlighted this for our office, and I'm happy to stand in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I want to thank both the filers at the City Council, but also Senator Seer and Rep. Brandy Fluker-Oakley. I am so supportive of this. I actually didn't know much about it before this was filed and got a chance to read up on it last night. And I think it's just so essential that we make sure people be in compliance and have the opportunity to be in compliance, even if they don't have the resources to get themselves out of this hole. And I think this is just incredibly important for us to be doing this. So thank you.
Thank you. Are any of my colleagues looking to speak on this matter? I also want to thank Greater Boston Legal Services. I think this is incredibly important that so many of the fees and fines that we have can be really regressive on the poor, on the working poor. And so I want to thank our colleagues at the State House, Senator Seer, Rep. Fluker-Reed on their advocacy, and want to thank my colleagues on bringing this forward. People who are living paycheck to paycheck often need to be able to drive, and the fees can be very detrimental. And so I want to thank my colleagues for putting this forward. I think this is incredibly important legislation for us to support, to stand in solidarity with poor folks, with working poor folks who oftentimes, disproportionately, of course, Black and Brown, but for whom these fees and fines often serve as a really big barrier. So is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Councilors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mehea, Murphy, Pepe, and Worrell. And please add the chair. Councilors Braden, Santana, and Weber, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1375. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1375. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin?
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mehea?
Yes.
Council Mehea, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Pepe?
Yes.
Council Pepe, yes. Council Santana?
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber?
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1375 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1376?
Docket number 1376. Council Fitzgerald and Murphy offer the following resolution concerning the labor dispute between Teamster and Republic Services.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Republic Services is a publicly traded Fortune 500 company, the second-largest disposal service in the country, that employs over 400 Local 25 Teamsters. We have contracts with two other waste disposal companies, Capital Waste and Star Waste/Boston Carding, and both pay a higher wage and offer better health insurance than Republic. I, like many of us here, visited those on strike and heard from those on the ground. It was quite simple. Fair pay and fair benefits is all they were looking for, not a penny more. Profits for Republic are egregious, and they have a free cash flow to be projected at $2.3 billion in 2025. As we speak, Republic, since last Thursday's meeting with the Teamsters, has not reached out to Local 25 or even the federal mediator in the process to continue negotiations. I'll also add that their storage facility along the border of my district engages in behavior that violates their authorization to operate. They queue up their trucks with Cambridge's waste along Gerard Street in violation of Boston's clean air and anti-idling policy. They don't close their bay, their bay doors between trips, allowing the smell to permeate the neighborhood. Their complaint line is disconnected, and they blow trash into, off of their property and into the neighborhood with blowers. They don't clean graffiti off their property. So needless to say, it shouldn't come as a surprise that this is the tactics they're taking in these negotiations, but I'm proud to stand with my brothers and sisters in Local 25 as they fight for fair pay and fair wages for a necessary service they provide our city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council Fitzgerald, for bringing this forward. I'm happy to be a lead sponsor on this. I first just want to say, I guess, thank you, or send my support to the strikers. I've been out three times now since they've been on strike last week, and it's not easy. It's not, it's hard, and they're not working, and what they want to do is work. So I do want to start by saying that. And I stand in support of this resolution concerning the labor dispute between Teamsters Local 25 and Republic Services. Republic Services is a Fortune 500 company that reported massive profits, returning over $1.1 billion to shareholders in 2024. And the CEO was paid 159 times more than a frontline trash hauler. Yet, they refused to negotiate fair wages, industry-level health benefits, or paid time off for over 400 hard-working Teamsters here in Greater Boston. These essential workers who keep our city clean and safe are striking for basic fairness. Their work directly impacts public health and quality of life. This isn't just a labor issue, it's a community issue. And every time I was out there with them, and we saw the trucks that have been holding tons and tons of trash, it tied directly into the rat issue we're talking about now. It's a public health issue to all of our residents in the city of Boston. By passing this resolution, we will send a clear message. We stand with Teamsters Local 25. We demand Republic Services to return to the table, agree to a fair contract, and resume reliable waste collection for our residents and businesses. Council Fitzgerald mentioned it, but Teamsters 25 came out with a statement earlier making it clear that they've been on strike for over a week now, and Republic refuses to take their call, and they're not talking to the mediator either. So what seemed to maybe be a day or two, and they were out there, when many of us may have been on vacation away down the Cape or other places, they were standing there in the heat, and, you know, in a picket line. And I was out there Monday morning with them, and trucks were coming in, and they were just trying to stop, stop the trucks from pulling in. So I hope my colleagues, I am sure we will, respect the fair pay, strong benefits, and dignity that all of our Teamsters and all of our union workers across the city deserve.
Thank you. Okay, lots of lights on. I'm going to go in this order, and then loop back. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to Council Fitzgerald and to Council Murphy. I think Council Fitzgerald will add me after. But want to say thank you to Council Fitzgerald for taking the lead on this important resolution in supporting Teamsters 25. Like, like all of my colleagues here, I've been at the picket line many times over the last, over the last week, probably four or five times. Spent a good, spent my July 4th there as well in Roxbury. No, no better place I'd rather be than supporting the men and women of Local 25. They provided an incredible service here in Boston to many companies or private, private groups that need dumpster services, but really the trash pickup throughout Greater Boston, these dedicated and professional workers at Local 25 are providing an exceptional service to cities and towns and to residents across, across Massachusetts. And they're also our neighbors. They're our family members. They're our community leaders. They're our youth, youth sports coaches, the people we respect in the community. And we want to say thank you to these frontline workers during the COVID, during COVID, they were out working, and they were picking up trash. They were supporting residents across the Commonwealth. We want to say thank you to them for their commitment to public safety, to public health, and to, and to supporting strong, strong and healthy neighborhoods. It's our job as city councillors to stand with residents when they're, when they're on strike or when they have issues. And that's what the Boston City Council is, Council is all about, in my opinion. It's about social and economic justice. Thank you, Council Fitzgerald.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council Flynn.
Okay. Council Fitzgerald seeks to suspend the rules and add Council Flynn as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Council Flynn is so added. We're going to go this way, and then I'll loop back this way. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. This is pretty simple. Do the right thing, bargain in good faith. Do the right thing, bargain in good faith. Do the right thing, bargain in good faith. And I think today, a lot of our colleagues are speaking up, but unfortunately, I haven't been able to visit the picket line yet. I'll be there soon. And I stand with these workers and their right to dignity, a fair wage, and one job.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I'm proud to stand in solidarity with the Teamsters Local 26, whose union hall is located in my district in 02129. Republic Services refuses to pay industry standards while their CEO, I think it's already been said, makes 150 times what his Massachusetts employees earn. In some cases, Republic's healthcare or health insurance is keeping workers and their families from receiving health care from their long-term trusted care providers, and in some cases, a denial of perinatal care, which is simply shameful. Billionaire companies make money on the backs of working people. It's been a weak Republic. It's time to answer the mediator's call and support your workers and support the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to stand in solidarity with Teamsters Local 25. Trash pickup workers are essential workers. As Council Flynn mentioned, through COVID, they kept us safe and helped us, you know, just keep our streets clean and keep us safe during a global pandemic. They're essential workers, essential workers. And we don't know how essential they are until they have a stoppage or they are not able to do their job. And I really feel that it is really untenable that Republic are not really negotiating in good faith to settle this dispute and provide good pay and good benefits for these work, these Teamsters. And I will hopefully get down to the picket line as soon as possible. I haven't made there yet, but it's on my agenda to go down there. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Council Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank Council Fitzgerald, Council Murphy, and Council Flynn for bringing this forward. You know, I did have the opportunity to go last week to the picket line, got to see Council Murphy. I think I just missed Council Flynn out there. But, you know, we need to stand with, with our workers, with our union partners here, Teamsters Local 25. They, they do so much for our city. They keep our city running. I know a lot of our colleagues have been saying, you know, they're picking up our trash. It's, we're in the midst. I don't know how many hot days we've had over the last few days and few weeks, right? And they continue to go out there. They love their jobs. I got to talk to many of the workers. They love what they do. They love serving the city. They love serving our families and residents. They just want to be compensated fairly. And that's not, they're not asking for a lot. So I really urge Republic Services to come back to the bargaining table, to continue these conversations, and to make sure that, again, our city workers here, our union workers are treated with respect and the dignity that they deserve. I'll continue to come back if I need to to the picket line and continue to fight alongside them and alongside my colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Santana. The Chair recognizes Council Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take a moment to stand in full support of the hard-working members of the Teamsters Local 25, who are advocating for better wages for Republic Services. These workers perform what I consider one of the most critical jobs in our city, keeping our streets, our neighborhoods, and our businesses clean and safe. Their work is essential, and it deserves to be respected and fairly compensated. We rely on them every single day, and it's only right that they receive the wages that reflect the importance and dignity of their labor. I urge Republic Services to come to the table in good faith and deliver a fair contract for these workers. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mehea. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to my colleagues for filing this resolution. I just want to stand in support. And I also just want to go a little bit deeper in regards to kind of the work that we can do here on the City Council and also the administration is that, you know, we should be looking at all those folks who are causing harm to any of our workers. And if we really want to put an end to this, I think that we should, whatever contracts we happen to have with Republic, if any, we should cease to have them, right? I think that that's what real accountability looks like. I think that this is an opportunity for us to stand in support, but also looking at who are the bad actors and who are not doing right by our, by our workers, and giving them the memo that we will cease to do business with them if they don't act accordingly. I think that that is the type of leadership and, and opportunities that we have here on the council, to send a message to not just resolve the contract, but to also make sure that you understand that you're doing business here in the city of Boston, and you should conduct yourself accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, as an attorney, I've represented trash haulers. I've represented delivery drivers. And we need to stand up and support anytime workers are trying to bargain collectively, because that's the only way they're going to secure, you know, a livable wage. And so, you know, I stand in support of our, our trash haulers here in the city, and we need to do whatever we can to make sure they earn a livable wage. I also point out that we're dealing with a Trump administration in DC, which is stripping the ability of the National Labor Relations Board to even handle disputes. And so I think it's more important than ever that we stand up and we push, you know, employers like Republic to the bargaining table, and I hope that they can get something resolved soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Weber. The Chair recognizes Council Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to Council Fitzgerald, Council Murphy, and Council Flynn for bringing this resolution forward. It should not be a battle that our essential workers are forced to fight for fair pay and critical benefits. So I just want to just thank all the union workers for their service, and encourage Republic Services to get back to the bargaining table. But then also just, again, just thank the union workers at Republic Services for taking on a charge on a fight that they should not have to. on a fight that they should not have to. And to the leaders at the Teamsters Local 25, thank you for standing by all workers in the fight for fair pay and good benefits. Look forward to making it down there to support our union workers. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Just wanted to rise and add that two of the days that I was there, that other unions stepped up, so thank you to the Greater Boston Labor Council, but when I was there, 223, the carpenters and the patrolmen, bringing water, bringing food, so it is wonderful to see, I know it's important that we show up and we, as city leaders, support them, but the other union brother and sisters that keep showing up for them is heartwarming. So just wanted to say thank you to all of our union members who show up for each other.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
I, I would also just like to state, thank you to my colleagues for putting this forward. I also went down to the strike line on one of the hottest days where people were, our workers were advocating relentlessly for them to be treated fairly and for them to receive fair wages. And so it is always frustrating when big bosses put profit before people, and there would not be Republic Services if there weren't workers who are working so hard every day to create the profit, to create the millions of dollars of profit that they are able to live lavishly off of. And so this, and I remember having conversations with folks, we're like, we've lived, we've, we've worked here for years and chosen not to go to other companies because of how much we care about work, and there's always a disproportionate amount when it's, when we're talking about how much workers care about their jobs and how much they're compensated. And so it, it just feels unconscionable when people are pocketing so much profit to not share that wealth with workers who are the reasons that they are able to make that profit. We're talking about pennies on the dollar when it compares to the money that people are pocketing. And so this is an issue that matters, I know, to all of us here on the Boston City Council when we're talking about our workers. You know, I want to thank Teamsters and Local 25 for the way that they show up, show up for workers all the time, who are being abused by profit makers, which includes my sister, whose workplace was suffering from unfair wages until my sister started organizing with Local 25 to stand in the gap and say that we deserve some of this profit as the people who are making you all this money. So I, my heart goes out to all the workers who were there on strike on a really hot day and who continue to persist there, and may they bargain in good faith. And so I hope Republic Services is listening so that they can know how much the Boston City Council and how much the Boston City Government cares about our workers. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Breeden, Kalata Zapata, Durkin, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Counselors Fitzgerald, Murphy and Flynn seek to suspend the rules and adopt docket number 1376. Madam Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1376, Counsel Breeden.
Yes.
Counsel Breeden, yes. Counselor Kalata Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Kalata Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. 12 in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 1376, has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1377?
Docket number 1377, Counsel Flynn offered the following resolution celebrating the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the ADA Day on July 23, 2025 in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This year marks the 35th anniversary of the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The ADA prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities and ensures that all people with disabilities are entitled to the same rights, opportunities and services as every other American. It promotes a society where people with, with disabilities can fully participate and thrive and have equal opportunities without facing unjust barriers or prejudice. According to a 2021 Census report, 8% of Boston residents under 65 live with disabilities. This includes difficulties in self-care, hearing, vision, independent living and walking. Here in Boston, we are, we will be celebrating ADA Day on July 23, 2025. There'll be a flag-raising ceremony as well and a march and roll along Tremont Street to the Boston Common and a rally at the Embrace Statue. I'd like to recognize the tremendous work that the Disabilities Commission has done to increase opportunities and participation for people with disabilities. I'd like to acknowledge the Commissioner McCosh, who's done an outstanding job, very professional over the many years. The Disability Commission has approved City Hall's ADA compliance, including City Hall Plaza, by adding accessibility features. Citywide, they increased accessibility for those with limited hearing through expanding closed captioning on public screens. I'd also like to acknowledge the role of then-City Councilor Michelle Wu in making this chamber here, the Ionalet Chamber, ADA compliant. Every day, their office continues to improve access and deliver services for those with disabilities to ensure facilities and public ways are ADA compliant. There are also many organizations in Boston that are dedicated to supporting people with disabilities, and we all know them because they're all in our, in our neighborhoods. But in my neighborhood of South Boston, I'd like to recognize the South Boston Special Kids and Young Adults who do great work. And we were talking about the Local 25 Teamsters Union, I also know the work they do on supporting children with disabilities. They have a Challenger Baseball League for children with special needs, and my father's actually one of the coaches of, of this team. I hope my colleagues will sign onto this resolution to celebrate this important ADA milestone. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Breeden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you Counsel Flynn for offering this resolution. As, as a professional physical therapist over 35 years in healthcare on both sides of the Atlantic, I realize how important this ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act is to ensuring that our, our disabled brothers and sisters have access to care and adaptive housing and all of what, what they need to fully participate in life. One very big concern I have right now in the present climate with the federal government is that many civil rights that the, the disability rights movement fought hard to get, many of those advances are being rolled back. And many of the advances, such as the IDEA, IDEA for, that provided for education for children with disabilities, is under threat due to federal cuts, across-the-board cuts in the federal government. So I think we have our work cut out for us to continue to advocate for funding and support for all of our constituents and residents here in Massachusetts, but also across the country, as many of the civil rights that we took for granted that have been long, hard and hard fought for are being rolled back. So that, that's something we need to commit to in this moment. So thank you, Counsel Flynn, for offering this, and we look forward to celebrating the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act on July 23. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Breeden, the Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you Counsel Flynn for bringing this forward. I'm looking forward to celebrating the 35th, I've gone out onto City Hall Plaza every year, and I know we also in the fall do a civic day for our special needs students who come from our BPS schools. Many of you will remember, that was when a student advocated that the ramp at English High would be ADA compliant because teachers were lifting the heavy students in wheelchairs, and the student who uses a wheelchair and needs an iPad for, to speak with a speaking assistant continued to advocate. And so knowing that, we have a lot of work to do across the city, I do want to uplift, I know Counsel Flynn did, but Commissioner McCosh and her department, but I also want to say as a mother of a child with a disability and as a special ed parent, I know personally how much that the ADA and all of the laws that came along with that, this act, really was life-changing to so many families. So we need to continue to do what we can and do more than that if needed. So looking forward to celebrating and continuing every day to uplift our residents who need assistance.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thank you for recognizing me again, I will be very brief, may I add Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor.
Oh, I thought she was already, okay, all right. Counsel Flynn seeks to suspend the rules, add Counsel Murphy as a third original co-sponsor, Counsel Murphy is so added, right, the third or the second? Oh, second, sorry. So Counsel Murphy is so added, Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, and the only, the final point I wanted to make is, I wanted to acknowledge the longtime career of helping people with, persons with disabilities of Counsel Breeden, want to acknowledge her work in that field for 30, 40 years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The ADA is such important legislation to get equality and the work of equity for our residents who are experiencing, who are living with a disability or who are differently abled. And we are currently in a time where so much of our civil rights legislation hangs in the balance, where it's being clawed back by this federal administration, and so I think it's important for us to continue to be champions at the local level of federal civil rights legislation, of making sure that we are creating opportunities and inclusivity for all of our residents. So I do want to shout out, I do want to shout out our, our Disabilities Office here, Director McCosh, and want to just shout out everyone who's always thinking about how we make our streets more accessible and more welcoming to residents and how we're making sure that we're including people of all abilities in every facet of, of our lives. I think earlier, several people talked about when they visited a program, whose name escapes me, at Whitworth Institute, where we are working with our BPS grads to make sure that those who are differently abled and disabled have opportunities of employment and have an ability, have ability to work. So just wanted to uplift the work that folks are doing around the city and our private, and our partners and universities to make that sure that that's happening. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Just wanted to add, shout out, because I know we were uplifting the Teamsters today, that they do their annual gala, which is a huge autism gala, so many times we do see it, it's our, you know, workers out there, our union workers, who support themselves, support each other, but always go above and beyond, so wanted to thank the Teamsters for that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Breeden, Kalata Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Counselors Flynn and Murphy, the expansion of the rules and adoption of docket number 1377. Madam Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1377, Counsel Breeden.
Yes.
Counsel Breeden, yes. Counsel Kalata Zapata.
Yes.
Counsel Kalata Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. 12 in the affirmative.
Thank you, this resolution has been adopted. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1378?
Docket number 1378, Counsel Worrell offered the following resolution in support of bringing a WNBA franchise to Boston.
Thank you, the Chair recognizes Counsel Orell, Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to add Counsel Durkin as an original co-sponsor.
Counsel Durkin is so added, Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
And I seek to suspend the rules and add Counsel President Louie Jean as a third original co-sponsor.
Counsel Orell seeks to suspend the rules, add myself as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, I am so added. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As a lifelong basketball fan, I'm excited that the WNBA is coming back to Boston next week, and once again, the WNBA has sold out the Boston Garden. That kind of excitement speaks to the momentum behind women's basketball. The talent, the star power is all world-class. Since the league's founding, Boston has never had a WNBA team. The Connecticut Suns media market overlaps parts of greater Boston, making expansion tricky. But now, the Sun may be for sale, and if relocation is on the table, there's no better home than the city of champions. Boston is ready to be home to a WNBA team, and the city doesn't need to build anything new to make it happen. The TD Garden is ready, the fans are ready, the city is ready. This is an easy layup. The new owners will have to find a practice facility, but as we know, that doesn't need to be built right here in Boston, and the city didn't contribute anything towards the Celtics and Bruins facilities in Boston Landing. Massachusetts has produced legends like Rebecca Lobo, Aliyah Boston and Governor Maury Healy, and we have seen what athletes like Jaylen Brown and Drew Holiday can do off the court. A WNBA team can be just as impactful. So here's a call to the current owners, the league and any interested investors, let's bring the WNBA to Boston. This is the continuation of the legacy of Alfreda Harris, the spirit of Medina Dixon and the fuel for future players like Tiana Mayer. I'll be looking to suspend and pass this resolution and looking forward to bringing a WNBA team to Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and you know, our Chair of Ways and Means, he's never short on big ideas. And I am a former mediocre high school basketball player, I was also recently inducted into my high school's Athletic Hall of Fame, so I think some of you saw those pictures, I used to be quite the athlete. Not in basketball, let me be clear. A vibrant sports culture is deeply integrated into our, the fabric of our city. You all have often heard me call District 8 the capital of fun. What could be more fun than a women's basketball team in Boston? Women's sports are finally receiving the attention they have long deserved, with rising popularity, media coverage and record-breaking viewership. For nearly 30 years, the WNBA has been a national leader for promoting equity, social justice and representation. But we all remember that picture of what the men's locker room looked like and what the women's locker room looked like during WNBA Finals. That won't happen in Boston. We value women's sports, and as someone who got to drop the women's beanpot, the first women's beanpot puck with the mayor at TD Garden, I know, and I'm actually on a Women of Nessin commercial, if you guys haven't seen it, I care deeply about women's sports getting the treatment that they deserve, and I think this is a step in the right direction. Let's show that our leadership, that city of Boston leadership, support this franchise coming to Boston, and let's think big, because the reality is, women's sports are a good investment and it would be a great, it would be additive, not subtracting from our sports history, our culture and everything that we want to promote in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. I too was a mediocre sports player, playing basketball actually, under the likes of so many folks who are leaders here in our city today. And I just remember growing up, watching the WNBA, watching Lisa Leslie, watching Rebecca Lobo, watching Teresa Weatherspoon and really hoping one day that I could be them, well, that did not happen, but it was still great that I, as a young black girl, had other role models in sports to look up to. And I remember when Teresa Weatherspoon came to my church and I had the opportunity to meet her, how, and this was in my, like, adulthood, fangirled over what she meant to so many of us who played basketball, whether we played at Latin or whether we played at the Muni in Hyde Park, having female ballers to look up to really meant a lot. As much as we love the NBA, that option, you know, I think it was really great to have anybody's watch Love and Basketball in Sol House in Arlington, when she joined the WNBA, that was a, it was an incredible moment. And so I am in full support of this, because I think that we have the talent and the excitement, especially among our young female ballers, to really help to sustain a team here, and like Counsel Orell said, and Counsel Durkin, there's no better place than in Boston, the city of champions, to double down on who we are by having a WNBA team here. So thank you to the counselor for proposing, and I look forward to, hopefully to spending and passing this today. The Chair recognizes Counsel Breeden, Counsel Breeden, you have the floor.
I think this is a great idea. I was not a basketball player, I was a field hockey player, but thank you, Counsel Worrell, for proposing this resolution. I, District 9 City Counselor, I just, you made, you connected all the dots there for me, Counsel Worrell. We have the Celtics and Bruins practice facilities on Guest Street, and they're ready, and ready to go, so just bring it on. We're, we are ready to host the WNBA in Brighton for their practices, I'm sure I'm maybe speaking out of turn. I'm sure I may be speaking out of turn for the city, but I think if we had an opportunity to bring WNBA to Boston, those practice facilities would be open and ready for them. So just bring it on down, and this is a fabulous idea. I also think it's wonderful that women in sports are incredible role models for our young women in schools all across the country, but especially here in Boston. So I think it's a win-win all around. So hopefully we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brayden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
And thank you to my colleagues for bringing this to the chamber. My daughter is a baseball... I mean, excuse me. She is a softball player and a basketball player. So I'm sure that if this were to happen, she would be super excited to see it. And while this is just a resolution, I'm going to assume that somebody's paying attention and listening and might be so inclined to come check out Boston as a place for this to happen. And I hope that when they do, they also understand that there'll be some expectations that'll be put on them and making sure that our kids who are from BPS are able to create the pipeline to make sure that city kids have an opportunity to also play. So just wanted to thank the makers for this very important initiative, and I hope to see it happen.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppen, Santana, Weber... Okay. I'm sorry if I missed... So Madam Clerk, you have those names. I don't know... Counsel Peppen, did I miss your light? Would you like to speak? I'm sorry. Counsel Peppen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to stand in support of this proposal by Counsel Worrell. I think it's a great idea. You know, as we look at our sports teams in Boston, we always say that we're City of Champions. I would love to see a women's NBA team here. As a father of a four-year-old girl that's grown up in the City of Boston, I think it would be amazing to have a team that she can look up to and that we are... We are broadening our horizon in terms of what kind of sports we are providing here in the City of Boston. I think that we can make this happen. I'm looking forward to work with Counsel Worrell to bring a team to Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just want to make sure, did I miss anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, we've already added names. Okay, so Counsel Worrell, Durkin, and Louie Jean seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1378. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1378. Counsel Brayden?
Yes.
Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia? Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppen?
Yes.
Counsel Peppen, yes. Counsel Santana? Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber? Counsel Weber, yes. Counsel Worrell? Counsel Worrell, twelve and affirmative.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 1378, has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1379?
Docket number 1379. Counselor Weber and Peppen offer the following resolution for July 4, 2025, in support of democracy and calling for a return to the constitutional principles that are the foundation of this republic.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Worrell as a third co-sponsor.
Counsel Weber seeks to suspend the rules and add Counsel Worrell as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Worrell is so added. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. This July 4th, we had the opportunity to reflect on why we fought for independence. The Declaration of Independence refers to liberty, but as we know, liberty would not be for everyone in the United States and instead depended on the color of your skin. At its core, however, this was a fight against monarchy, and after Boston led the nation in rebellion, we were free from the rule of kings. In its place, we constructed a government that would not have a king and would seek to prevent power from being accumulated in one person. Montesquieu is credited with outlining a government with three powers: that of enacting laws, that of executing the public resolutions, and of trying the causes of individuals. The framers of the Constitution sought to create a federal government that separated these powers among Congress, the executive branch, and the courts, and created a system of checks and balances that would prevent one branch from accumulating all of the power. As James Madison wrote in Federalist Paper Number 47, "The accumulation of all powers, legislative, executive, and judiciary in the same hands may be justly pronounced the very definition of tyranny." The system of checks and balances, however, is not working today. The biggest difference between the first Trump administration and the second is that now President Trump is unrestrained. It's hard to believe that during his first administration, when President Trump sought to send U.S. military after people, U.S. citizens who were protesting the murder of George Floyd, his own Defense Secretary opposed him, saying, "The option to use active-duty forces in a law enforcement role should only be used as a matter of last resort and only in the most urgent and dire situations." We are not in one of those situations. Now, however, the guardrails are off, and the Trump administration, among other things, has used the Insurrection Act to send American troops into our own cities. No president has invoked the Insurrection Act against a state's wishes since Lyndon Johnson did so to provide protection for civil rights activists in Alabama who were beaten by police officers while trying to march from Selma to Montgomery in 1965. Despite a lower court's ruling, Trump's use of the Insurrection Act... That Trump's use of the Insurrection Act was illegal, the Ninth Circuit overturned that ruling and has allowed troops to remain under Donald Trump's control. On Monday, a large group of soldiers marched on horseback through MacArthur Park in Los Angeles, where children were playing... Was that three minutes? I apologize. Okay, well, I will fast-forward to the end. We have seen the use... The invocation of the Alien Enemies Act based on Trump's proclamation that we're under an invasion. Just last week, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said that they did not see a Supreme Court case that would allow them to even challenge it, even there's no factual basis for... To show an invasion here in this country. We've seen Congress...
Can you wrap it up, Counsel Weber?
Yep. We've rejected a War Powers Resolution that would require authorization before the president bombs Iran again. We've seen acquiescence of their authority over the power of the purse and that we've seen a budget passed that would defund... Take money away from Medicaid and vital programs to fund ICE, which has been used as the president's own personal army. You know, here in this country, we have fought for...
Thank you, Counsel Weber.
To have no kings and no demagogues. Instead, that's what we... That the... All three branches of government have allowed to exist in the executive branch. This resolution would just... Would call... Would follow up on other proclamations that Boston and other cities had against King George III before the American Revolution.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. Appreciate your advocacy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppen. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Boston and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts were the cradle that grew the American Revolution, revolution against the increasingly pervasive British control in colonial society. King George stripped the colonies of their voice by preventing public meetings. They closed commercial courts and levied taxes to financially control colonists. And they shielded the king's allies for justice by moving trials to friendly courts in England. These everyday interferences were designed to compel the colonists to be obedient to the crown. Despite the injustices they faced, some of Boston's early citizens stood strong and fought hard to resist the overreach of the crown, and their energy sparked the flame of the American Revolution. This history of resistance, independence, and passion are reason why I'm so proud to be a Bostonian. These days, it seems that the Trump administration is using its power to do much of the same, whether it's using the threat of prosecution to control mayors, withholding funding and admissions from universities to control academia, or making his agents erase public accountability. We are straying from our founding principles and are living in a nation that increasingly looks more like a rule under King George than under the Constitution. While our federal government continues to stray away from the founding principles of our country, we here in Boston are not going to so willingly stray from those principles. I am proud to share that my constituents in Rosinell will be holding a Good Trouble Rally at Adams Park in Rosinell Square on Thursday, July 17, at 5:30 p.m. to protest the frightening and daily injustices committed by this federal administration. The people of Boston and our country are scared. We must stand our ground. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention, since you mentioned a rally, I know that next week also on the anniversary of John Lewis's birthday, the Greater Boston Labor Council and so many of our unions are coming together in a very much of a no-kings fashion to push back against everything that's happening. So again, Counsel Weber, I wanted to thank you for putting this forward and to all of... And to the co-sponsors, because I think that the mass energy is what's needed at the moment. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to Counsel Weber for spearheading this charge, for bringing me on as a co-sponsor. And thank you to also Counsel Peppen. This resolution cannot come at a more fitting time. I'm not just talking about the fact that the Fourth of July just occurred. We are now on the eve of our country's 250th birthday. As my colleagues stated so well, our state's constitution was the original blueprint for the U.S. Constitution. For me, that's further evidence that leadership is inherent to our city as the water of the Charles. If we want to keep leading in medicine, in biotech, in education, in democracy itself, we have to be just as committed to protecting our values as we are to our progress. That means being clear on what our U.S. Constitution actually stands for. It means pushing back on misinformation that tries to divide or distract us. And it means making sure our kids, our neighbors, and future generations understand the importance of things like checks and balances, individual rights, and freedom of choice. Boston should always be a place where people know that their rights will be respected and that the government will be accountable. That's the standard we set, and that's the bar we have to keep meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to thank my colleagues. And for those folks who are tuning in, let me just give you the basic principles of what this is... What it's about for those folks who aren't studying the Constitution. So basically, one of the... There's seven, I believe. But one of them is popular sovereignty. The government right to... The government right to rule comes from the people. The government's right to rule comes from the people, the people that put us here. Yet earlier today, we neglected to listen to the people. Limited government. Government has only the powers that the Constitution gives it. Okay. Checks and balances. I'm not going to give you all of them. I'm just going to give you the ones that usually play out here in this chamber. Checks and balances. Each branch of government has the power to check or limit the actions of the other, which is something that I think we need to start learning how to do even here. Federalism. Division of power between the federal government and the states. Yep. Republicanism. Citizens elect representatives to carry out their will. Imagine that. They elect us to carry out their will. But yet, when we have the opportunity to do so, we neglect to rise up to the occasion as previously experienced in the earlier part of our time together. And I think it's really important as we continue to navigate the political climate that we find ourselves in, I think it's really important for us to understand that local government and the way that we show up in this space and the way we utilize our microphones to amplify the voices of the people is part of the democratic process. People put us in these seats so that we can champion their voices. And I think it's really important for us to start demonstrating that leadership here locally so that we can start... Continue to sound the alarm nationally. So I just want to advocate for us, as we continue to fight for things that are happening on the federal level, for us to be mindful of how we're showing up here on the local level. If we say for the people, by the people, then we should really be about the people and demonstrate their will when they ask us to fight on their behalf. And until we start doing that, I just think that, you know, these sort of things make absolutely no sense for those folks who are trying to understand the way we're moving here.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, there's a lot written and spoken about at this time about this particular resolution. I'd like to learn more about it, and I'd like to respectfully ask if we have a committee hearing on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I can ask the maker if he would like... Counsel Weber, a question has been put forward on your resolution about whether you'd like... Would you like to respond, Counsel Weber?
Yes, I don't think we need a resolution. We've seen U.S. military patrolling our streets. We've seen people picked up without any due process sent to detention centers in El Salvador. We've seen all... Cutting of all kinds of, you know, food stamps and other benefits here. I think we've seen enough, and it's time for us... You know, I think also... I tried to file this before July 4th. I think it's time for us to agree on this resolution. I'm not sure a hearing is necessary at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel Flynn, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I'm going to request a block. I'm not going to...
Are you objecting?
I'm objecting.
You're objecting? Okay. Counselor Flynn is objecting to this resolution, and therefore, this resolution, Counsel Weber, will be placed in the Committee on Civil Rights, Immigrant Advancement, and Racial Equity. Okay, thank you. I think that's it. What is your point of order, Counsel Flynn?
I just wanted to make a clarity that when people block, and it's happened to me many times, a resolution, it doesn't mean they're blocking the resolution. And I don't want to speak for Counsel Flynn.
Oh, that's not... That's not a point of order.
No, but it is.
It's not a point of order. It's not a... That's not a point of order. That's not a rule issue you're explaining. Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to add their name to a docket or change a vote when they were out of chambers? So the Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor. Oh, sorry. I don't have your mic on. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to add my name to 1340... Sorry, 1374. Miguel Rosales-Tan.
1374?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could we add Counsel Coletta Zapata's name to docket number 1374?
Okay, I guess that was a vote. You were on the vote, or you want to vote on it too?
Yes, I'd like to vote yes.
So would you like to put forward a motion first? You'd like to vote on this docket?
I would like to vote on that.
For docket number 1374? Yes, yes, I'm getting there. Counsel Coletta Zapata, she was only adding her name, and now she's trying to vote on the matter, which is what I'm saying. Would you like to present Counsel Coletta Zapata a motion to reconsider the vote on docket number 1374?
Yes, I'd like to present.
Is that seconded? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Counsel Coletta Zapata, how would you like to vote on docket number 1374?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Yes.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name or change their vote to a docket when they were out of chambers? Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to green sheets. Would anyone like to pull anything from the green sheets? Oh, the Chair recognizes... The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to... Just give me one second.
Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, sorry, this is not working. Does anyone else have any green sheets? This Counselor?
You can take your time, Counsel Santana.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry.
You're welcome.
This is for the... I was looking for the number itself. But this is for the shedding grant. We passed it last week or last council meeting, but there was two parts to the grant. And I felt when I passed... Well, when this body passed it last week, I didn't realize it was a two-part grant. And I would like to pass the second part of the grant to fund the amazing organizations and programs that we discussed that do a lot of public safety work. The number itself... Oh, my goodness.
I'm quickly trying to help you, so it's okay.
My iPad stopped working, so that's why you should print everything out. Can I just request a two-minute recess?
Yeah.
I would literally have this.
Okay, two-minute recess. Well, it's 3:53, so let's just say five minutes, 3:58.
Thank you.
We are in recess. We are back in session. So Counsel Santana, do you now have the docket number?
Yes.
Oh, could you please give us the docket number?
Docket number one two five nine.
Docket number one two five nine. Madam Clerk, do you have that docket in front of you?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, could you please read that docket into the record?
Docket one two five nine, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept an expend the amount of $450,000 in the form of a grant from the Cummins Foundation to be administered by the Office of Human Services. The grant would support violence prevention, including events, community outreach, and engagement, and efforts to support the city's summer safety plan and planter end violence.
Thank you, and just so we're clear, that's docket number one two four nine, right?
One two five?
One two five nine. Okay, docket number one two five nine, sorry about that. Okay, absent objection? If anyone would like to object? Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counselor Santana, I know you explained that a little bit before, but if you'd like to speak some more now, you may.
Thank you, Madam President, and appreciate you and my colleagues for being patient with me. I'm trying to find that. I would just say very quickly, you know, I think it's extremely disrespectful, and I think, quite frankly, makes me nervous when some of my colleagues decide to say different things while I'm trying to speak and while others are trying to speak, and I really don't appreciate that for my colleagues.
Counsel Mehea, if you walk out, we will have a quorum issue, so I just, I want to make sure that we get, yes, I understand. We are, we, oh, we do? Okay, we're good, we're good. Okay, okay.
So I just wanted to say that.
And I apologize to you, Counsel Santana, that that's happening, and I will pay better attention to make sure that that doesn't mean that you aren't interrupting.
It's no indication on you, Counsel President, no, it's just, I tend to stay quiet during these things, and that really bugged me, and it shocked me, and I have a lot of things that I want to get done, and I don't know if, like, I haven't even got to get through that process right now. So I just wanted to say that out there, just because I think, it doesn't just affect me, I think it also affects some of my colleagues that are here. But, again, back to this important grant, this grant funds violence prevention, public safety, violence prevention programs. We had a hearing, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Murphy, Counsel President LuJen, believe Counsel Fitzgerald was also there. We got to ask many questions. These are amazing programs that do amazing work, that reduces public, public safety. And again, we passed this on the last, last meeting. I didn't realize it was a two-part grant, and that's why I want to be able to pass it today. So I hope that my colleagues will join me in passing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Santana, and thank you for making sure that this was an important hearing, and these are important grants, and so thank you for your diligence in making sure that this gets passed, and I appreciate your work and your leadership as the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice. So thank you so much, Counsel Santana. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and also want to acknowledge Counsel Santana. Having these hearings, we learned a lot from various groups, listening to them, listening to what they propose, but also listening to public safety professionals as well, and that was the critical part of the hearing, in my opinion, was listening and learning and asking questions. And that's exactly why I like these hearings, is because when I come to these hearings, I'm always learning something, and that's what my, that's what our call, that's what our constituents expect from us to do our due diligence. So I want to acknowledge Counsel Santana for doing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Santana, thank you for, again, putting this forward, and thank you also for talking about the importance of collegiality and of us working together and making sure that we are respecting when there is one person speaking, whispering or talking underneath your breath is very disruptive to our colleagues. It's disruptive to me up here, and it's very disruptive to our colleagues. So people feel it, it's not what residents want. They want us to be focusing on the issues here, and for us to be working together, and so Counsel Santana, thank you again for taking your leadership and for taking the space to acknowledge when it's not a good atmosphere for us to be doing this work. I appreciate that, and I will be doing more of that work to make sure that we are able to work here collaboratively and together to do things like making sure we're protecting public safety and getting these grants out the door. Counsel Santana seeks passage of docket number one two five nine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. We are now moving on, oh, does anybody have any more polls from the green sheets? Okay, we are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are five.
Four personnel and one resolution.
And not the landmark. No, okay. I am informed by the clerk that there are five late-file matters, four personnel orders and one resolution. Madam Clerk, could you please read the four late-file personnel orders into the record?
Personnel order, Counsel LuJen for Counsel Mehea. Personnel order, Counsel LuJen. Personnel order, Counsel LuJen. Personnel order, Counsel LuJen for Counsel Orrell.
Thank you. We will now take a vote to add these late-file matters onto the record. All in favor of adding these four personnel order late-file matters to the record, say aye.
Aye.
These matters have been added onto the record. We will now take a vote to, you've read them into the record, we will now take a vote to pass these late-file personnel orders. All in favor of adding these late-file personnel orders, say aye.
Aye.
Of passage of these late-file personnel orders, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, these personnel orders have passed. Okay, we are, we have one resolution matter, I see lights on, are they, with respect to, okay, I'm going to move on to the late file, I mean, if it's, is there a point of order, a point of clarification, a point of inquiry?
Are you, Madam Chair?
Because we have, we're in late files, so do you have a late file that you would like to speak on?
I only want to speak if I was recognized.
Well, we're in late files, and so if you have a late, if you have an issue on a late file?
Yes, Madam Chair.
On the resolution that's about to come before the body?
Madam Chair, I recognize.
Do you, you have a late-file matter that you'd like to speak on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question. I want to file a late-file matter. I wanted to speak before I was, I was recognized, that's why I didn't want to speak before you recognized me, but my assistant is writing a late-file matter for me right now. Could we, could I give her a couple of minutes so she's able to finish the?
So let's get through the resolution, that we still have.
That's fine, Madam Chair, I just, I just want to be respectful to the process.
So we still have one more late-file matter resolution, and if we need to consent, continue to the consent agenda, we will do that, and then we will see where your team is regarding the late-file matter, and if we need to take a recess, I'm happy to do that, so that your late-file matter can be added to the agenda. Counsel Mehea, do you also have, with respect to a late-file matter?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I had another question, but since.
Is it, is it with respect to a late-file matter?
Well, it wasn't, but.
So we are on late files right now.
Hold on a second. Give me a minute. Please, let me just gather my thoughts. Is that okay?
We are in late files.
I understand, Madam President.
Okay.
But I think that, you know, your desire to want to make sure that we're all collaborative and we're all taking care of each other, it's part about, it's also having the emotional intelligence to allow people to speak.
Yep, and I will do that if it's not about late files.
But you keep interrupting me, Madam.
Yeah, so, but I'm going to tell you the process. So after we talk about late files, if we get through late files, then we can speak, but we, right now, we're on late files. Okay, so we have a resolution that's been offered. Madam Clerk, could you please read the late-file resolution matter into the record?
Offered by Counsel Sharon Durkin. Emergency resolution calling on the Haley administration to protect access to life-saving GLP-1 medication and establish a task force on exports.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add this late-file matter onto the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket, this late-file matter has been added onto the record. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Today I rise to speak not just as a city counselor, but as someone personally impacted by what's at stake. I'm on Wegovy, I started in March, and I've lost around 40 pounds. I feel better, healthier, and stronger. Truthfully, I feel more myself than I have in a long time. As a woman in politics, particularly in the age of social media, I've been subject to more scrutiny than ever before, but not just about my work, my appearance. I've struggled with my health in most of my adult life, and I've never had so many people commenting on my weight than I have the last two years. So I decided to make a change, I decided to invest in my health, and this medication has been transformational for me. I share this personal story not to make this about me, but because there is so much stigma around these conversations and misunderstandings surrounding these medications, I want folks to know that they are not alone. When I went to my PCP, I was met with compassion, not stigma. Dr. Mesmer did her job to support me as her patient, she helped me with my health, and she understood her, her, her ability to do no harm. GLP-1 medications like Wegovy, Zepbound, and Ozempic are not cosmetic or vanity drugs. They are real treatments for real diseases. They are helping people across the city and across the Commonwealth manage obesity, reverse diabetes progression, lower blood pressure, and prevent long-term complications that devastate families and bankrupt our healthcare system. And yet, instead of expanding access, we are watching access to these medications be stripped away. Last week, the governor directed the Group Insurance Commission to eliminate coverage of GLP-1s for weight loss. Blue Cross Blue Shield has announced they'll do the same, and I've heard from city workers already that they have lost access to Zepbound starting July 1. This means that hundreds of thousands, or sorry, hundreds of thousands of public workers, including city employees right here in Boston, will not have their doctor get to choose whether they should have access to a drug that we know works. They will lose access to the care they need simply because they can't afford it. Serving on the Boston City Council, I witnessed firsthand how health disparities impact our communities, particularly those with less access to quality care and where access to quality of care is already limited. At a time when Medicare and Medicaid are facing federal funding cuts, it's most important that us as a public body understand our ability to advocate for residents. And these decisions are not being made in the name of public health, they're being made in the name of cost-cutting. Denying coverage only deepens existing health inequities and drives up long-term costs for emergency care, and accorumorbidities associated with obesity. So today, I'm asking for three things, and I'm asking my colleagues to join me. First, I'm calling on the Massachusetts Legislature to reject the governor's directive to the Group Insurance Commission. We cannot move forward with a policy that will harm so many people without taking the time to understand its full impact. Second, I'm urging the governor to establish a statewide GLP-1 task force, a group of medical experts, individuals benefiting from GLP-1 medications, representatives from insurance companies, and healthcare economists who can evaluate the clinical, economic, and human stake of the issue and give the Commonwealth evidence-based recommendations. And third, I'm calling on all of us, from Beacon Hill to City Hall, to make sure that residents have access to care. Massachusetts should be leading the nation in equitable healthcare, not pulling it back. You all stood with me when NIH cuts were down the line.
Counsel Mehea, can you wrap it up?
Yes, you all stood with me when NIH cuts were down the line. These, this was created, this drug and these drugs were created with this life-saving research. And now, when budgets are on the line, there is a choice between making sure that residents have access to things that will save us money down the line. For me, this is personal, it's personal for thousands of our residents, it's personal to public employees that I've heard from, it's personal to city workers, and it should matter to all of us, to believe, who believe in the power and promise of public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would you like to speak on this matter? Okay, Counsel Mehea, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. So I thank Counsel Durkin for bringing this to the floor. I am sure I've said this publicly, I once upon a time was on insulin, I had gestational diabetes, and I lost my battle to weight loss, and I had to make a drastic decision because I didn't want to be a lifelong diabetic, and so I had to have a decision to have the gastric bypass sleeve, and that was a very dramatic decision that I had to make for my own well-being, but I was able to reverse my diabetes, my blood pressure, and now I'm able to live a healthier life. So I understand the importance from a quality of life perspective. So I want to thank you for sharing your story. I know it's not an easy thing to do, so I just want to acknowledge that it is a journey, and I do appreciate you sharing that so publicly. So thank you for that. Now, my question is to the Madam President, which is what I was trying to articulate earlier, but I didn't find the right words to be appropriate in my question. I was under the impression that normally when you have late files, you had a request that it be in an emergency, and that that's the only way you were going to accept one. So the question that I was trying to ask, that I was not able to articulate in a timely fashion to meet the expectation of how I should show up here, was just that, is that, from my understanding, a late file, in order for it to be accepted, has to be an emergency? And if that has changed, then I just would like to know, and if it's not, if it's just a different dynamic, then I'm okay with it, but it's just for my own edification and understanding, so that we can be consistent with our rules here.
Yep, yep, thank you for that question. So that is true under Rule 46, that it has to contain a declaration of emergency here, it's called an emergency resolution, calling on the Haley administration to protect, based on a recent decision that the, that the Haley administration has made, which is.
So is there a position that we don't do today?
So the.
So, for the sake of the exercise here, because what we have seen here oftentimes is that people challenge things, and so it's important for us, or at least for me, to get it on the record in terms of, if it is an emergency, is there a deadline? Is there a vote happening next week? So that I can understand this, so in case when I want to pull something and it may, you know, a case for it being an emergency, that I get the same understanding that everyone else has, so that I know what is an emergency to you and what is not an emergency. So that way, I am clear, and I don't have any unmet expectations.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin, if you'd like to respond to the chair, you may.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you to the question, Counselor Mejia. My understanding is that for the legislature to reject the governor's veto, that would probably be done before the next meeting, so it's an important, timely matter. And I know many of you may have seen former chief of policy Joyce Lenihan's op-ed in the Boston Globe. She actually wrote that op-ed prior to this decision being made, so it only, only doubling down on the fact of how important this is. And I'll just give some more context, that the governor actually urged, and the governor's administration urged, folks that were state employees to get on other drugs that would be covered, and then a lot of those people made those switches, and then she vetoed her own conversation that she was having with city, with, sorry, state workers. So, this is really important. This veto was a departure from the initial. So, it's very important that I think the city council make a statement today. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I, if people feel like something is not an emergency, they can always object. Counselor Mejia, I've seen you object before to a late file. If there, I believe, right, in my estimation, that this meets the standards of Rule 46 and that there are, there's emergency language included in here. If anyone feels differently, they can do what everyone on this body knows how to do, which is object. Okay, Counselor Flynn, is your late file... Okay, so, did we, did we take a vote on that docket? Okay. So, would anyone else like to speak on Counselor Durkin's docket? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please, there's Counselors Brayden, Collette Zapata, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Pepe, Murphy, Flynn, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. Counselor Durkin, the expansion of the rules and adoption of this late file matter. Madam Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on the late file. Counsel Brayden.
Yes.
Counsel Brayden, yes. Counsel Collette Zapata.
Yes.
Counsel Collette Zapata. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Luiz.
Yes.
Counsel Luiz, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. Counsel Worell. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. This docket is passed. Okay, thank you. Counsel Flynn, is your, do you have your late file matter yet? We will now move on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Counsel Flynn, does your team need more time to file the late file matter?
I'm not going to file it, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counsel Flynn is not filing the late file matter. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. We have some upcoming birthdays, or some birthdays that have happened. Diane Louise Bronchuk, Diane, Diana, sorry. Timothy Guimond, Vanessa Wu, Stephen Clark, Angela Yard, Casey Barrett, Vivian Sitso, Gabrielle Cruz, Carly Moran, Andrew Galvin, Matthew Costas, myself coming up, Scarlett Abreu Martinez, Lily Sweeterman. So, happy birthday to all the birthdays that are coming up. I know that there are different community events happening this weekend, including, there are a few, I know that there's the Little Saigon Night Market on this Saturday, and there's a grand opening of the Mattapan Square Farmers Market, and there's Open Streets in Roxbury, and that's, and on Sunday, there's a Zoo Mix Walk for, Walk for Music. If any of my colleagues would like to make any announcements, now is the time to do so. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be very brief. I want to invite my colleagues immediately after this hearing for a, for a lunch, and the guest speaker that I invited was the executive director from the Women's Lunch Place on Newbury Street, right in the Copley area, an exceptional organization supporting women in transition, supporting them with housing referral, with other social services. My wife, Kristen, and I are very active and involved in this wonderful organization, but they also do exceptional work across the city, especially and including, I should say, including in my district. They're very welcoming to Asian women, and want to acknowledge them, and invite my colleagues to join us right after this.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Collette Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to shout out an event that we're sponsoring next week, July 19th, in the North End, from 12 to 3 on the Prado. It's called the Sagrada del Sugo. It's a pasta sauce or gravy, depending on what you call it. It's a showdown. So, it's going to be a really fun event. There's going to be a People's Choice Award of the best sauce or gravy. We're going to have arts and crafts, face painting. We're going to have pasta necklaces being made. It's going to be great. So, again, it's on the Prado. The, all tickets benefit the North End Youth Organization. It's July 19th, 12 to 3. Would love to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any announcements? Okay. Oh, oh, the chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Yeah, just for a shout out, Little Saigon Night Market is coming up this Saturday, 4 to 9. It's a great event. They close down the street at Dodav and Fields Corner, and it's very well attended, and it's really an awesome thing, so I'd invite everybody to come and check it out.
Awesome. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, we are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to uplift a name? I know I mentioned her last week, but her funeral is tomorrow, and I just want to uplift again, Claudia Smith Reed. Roxbury, advocate, fighter, resident, amazing human being. So, just continue, continuing to mourn her loss. I also wanted to uplift the victims of the flooding in Texas. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to uplift, this past week, my family and I received, you know, some pretty sad news about my grandmother back in the Dominican Republic, kind of suddenly passing away, and just want to be able to uplift her and my family during this difficult time. My family got to travel last night to Dominican Republic. Fortunately, I wasn't, I wanted to be there, but I knew that, you know, being here and doing this work is important, but just want to be able to keep thoughts and prayers to my family, especially my dad, who's just lost his mother. Thank you, Madam President.
My condolences to you and your family, Henry. I lost my grandmother recently, and it's, it's really hard.
The chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, you have the floor.
I just want to give my, my prayers to the Santana family, and especially to Henry for losing his grandmother. I also lost my grandmother in January, so I just, I know what it, what it's like to go through that, so I'm just praying for your family, man.
Thank you. Anyone else? The chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you. First, my condolences to our colleague Counselor Santana as well for the loss of his grandmother, but also wanted to lift up Meredith Joyce, the mother of Kathleen Joyce of the Licensing Committee, and she's just recently passed away, so our condolences and prayers go out to Kathleen and her family.
Thank you. And the, and the chair recognizes Counsel Pepe.
I also just wanted to uplift the, the life of Maria Farrell's dad, Mr. Farrell. Maria Farrell worked for the Licensing Department as well, and I was, we were just at the funeral. Not too long ago, I just, I met him last week at Bacaro's in Hyde Park. He wasn't joining his dinner, and then a few days later, he passed, so I just, just praying for that, for Maria Farrell's family.
Thank you. And I also just liked, he was in Chambers, actually, earlier, Bob Binney. Yesterday, he buried his sister, Nancy Kelleher, so just wanted to make sure that I uplift his family at this time. So, on behalf of Counselors Brayden, Margaret, Peggy, Murray. On behalf of Counselor Collette Zapata, Robert, Bobby, Elmo, Spug Nulio Jr. On behalf of Counsel Fitzgerald, Isaiah Tavares Texera, and Kathleen Joyce's mom. On behalf of myself and Counsel Durkin, Nancy Kelleher, sister of Bob Binney. And on behalf of this entire Boston City Council, Counsel Santana's grandmother. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. And also, including that was Counsel Pepe's Maria, Maria's, Maria's father, so. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the INL at Chamber on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 12 noon. Thank you to my colleagues, to central staff, to the clerk in the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye?
Aye.
The council is adjourned.[1770.41]